Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Robinsdale Area Schools School Board to order. Today is Monday, October 20th. It is 6:01 PM. We are in the boardroom of the Education Service Center, and I would like to start by reading our land acknowledgement statement. "We acknowledge Robinsdale Area Schools as located on the homelands of the Dakota and Ojibwe people. We recognize the painful history of genocide and forced assimilation of the indigenous inhabitants of this land. We honor and respect the many indigenous peoples who live on and hold sacred these lands, and we stand with members of these nations to fight injustice in all of its forms. We uphold the preservation of Dakota and Ojibwe languages, land-based education, and tribal sovereignty." And before we call the roll, I will just mention, some of you were here earlier, we were soundly defeated by the Armstrong High School Quiz Bowl team tonight, 510 to 200, but it was a great experience for us. So if you were here, that's what you were watching. All right, please call the roll.
And it could have been worse.
Oh, it could have been a lot worse.
Yes, with pleasure. Director Bassett?
Yes, sorry I'm late. Excuse me, as you all know, for the public's benefit, I lost my sister, so I've been dealing with quite a bit, and I was a little bit late, so I just wanted to acknowledge that because you're here waiting. Carry on.
Director Bowman is present. Chair Evans Becker?
I'm here.
Director Helen Brand?
Here.
Director Long?
Here.
Director Wu To?
Here.
And Dr. Salo?
Here.
Thank you. You're welcome.
We are all here. So first thing up is approval of our agenda. This is a voice vote. Do I have a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Moved by Director Helen Brand, seconded by Director Bowman. Seeing no hands, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have an agenda. Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and are enacted with one motion of the board, unless a particular board member wants to remove an item, and then we will vote on that separately. So items on our consent agenda for tonight are administrative, the monthly professional development report and meeting minutes, financial reports, bi-monthly disbursements report, business office monthly contract report, community education monthly contract report, disbursements for September 2025, and monthly budget to actual report, personnel reports, licensed staff lane changes, licensed staff personnel report, and non-licensed personnel report. Is there a move to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Bowman?
Second.
Seconded by Director Wu To. This is a roll call vote because it involves money.
I just have a question.
Oh, yes.
So I was just wondering, I was looking at the report on the professional development, and there was a professional development for bargaining, and then it said something about the outcome was for it, was for reading. I'm thinking that was a misprint, because I'm thinking that went with the PD one below. I'm trying to find it here, sorry. There's a lot of charges in here. Oh, is it this? Yes, yep. And then it says alignment with the SIP, and then it says reading intervention. I'm thinking that that probably went with the bar training, not the negotiation seminar, or just the negotiation seminar aligned with the SIP goal of reading intervention.
I think you're probably accurate. We'll assume that you're correct.
That it was a misprint. Okay.
Yeah.
We can get that corrected. Thanks. Okay. That was it. That was my only question.
Thank you very much. In that case, we're ready to vote on the consent agenda. Will the clerk please take the vote?
With pleasure. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Helen Brand?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wu To?
Yes.
Seven, six zero.
We have approved consent agenda. Okay. Moving on, number five, unfinished business. We don't have any. So let's do number six, new business. The first item is an action item, the annual support of forms A and B to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Director Williams, Executive Director Williams?
I'm here to request approval of two of the Minnesota State High School League forms A and Form B from the Minnesota State High School League. Form A, grant support for Minnesota high school youth helps offset the cost of students who qualify for free and reduced activity fees. From Armstrong this year of 2425, we had 653 students who qualified for free and reduced, and at Cooper we had 324 students who qualified for free and reduced. These are unduplicated numbers, and students who participated in various activities. So this Form A helps offset some of that cost. I'm also here to request, again, approval of the resolution for the Form B grant application to the Minnesota State High School League. The purpose of this grant is to provide funding to assist school districts with three specific areas, including leadership initiatives, safety, and transportation that reduces the barriers for participation. The Minnesota State High School League Foundation is a nonprofit association. The foundation awards grants to assist, recognize, promote, and fund extracurricular activities by high school students in athletics, fine arts programs. Grants are awarded based upon gender balance, school size, and geographic location to the extent possible. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions on this? This is routine. We do this every year.
Yes.
Okay. So then what I would like is a motion to, I think, move to, move the resolution for Form A?
Right. I was going to move the approval of Form A and B grant. We're going to do it in one, correct?
Do we do it in one, or do we do it in two?
We typically, we have done it in two, but I'm not sure if they can, can it?
I think we've done it in two in the past. So do you want to do A first?
Sure. Move approval of Form A.
And waive the reading of the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to approve Form A?
Second.
Moved by Director Bowman, seconded by Director Helen Brand. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we've approved Form A. Let's go ahead and do the same thing for Form B. Do I have a person moving the resolution?
I'll move approval as a resolution of Form B.
Thank you, Director Bowman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Wu To. All in favor of approving, and let's waive the reading of the resolution on that. Yes?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of approving resolution of B, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we have approved A and B. Okay? Thank you. All right. Let's see, new business. The next item is the resolution for accepting of donations. I'm going to get back to that. Each month we accept donations?
A move roll.
Thank you. Director Bassett has moved approval of accepting the donations.
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Bowman. This is a roll call vote because it has to do with money. Let's take the vote on accepting the donations.
With pleasure. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Helen Brand?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wu To?
Yes.
Six zero.
Thank you very much. We think, we accept the donations and we thank the people who did the donating. All right. Item number seven is policy. We have second reads on policies. These policies are, Director Bowman, what's the word?
These are technical.
Technical in that it's just changes in wording due to state law changes. And so in order to update our policies, we have, our policy committee has updated the wording on these policies, and this is our second read. So is there?
I have a question.
Director Bassett?
Yes. I'm just wondering, and Director Wu To, you know, I had sent you some information about cross-reversing our bylaws, and I just wondered if you had a comment?
I believe you were talking about policy 205.
Thank you.
Yes, and I think the information that you emailed me is included.
Oh, very good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. I have a question for Director Wu To. Can these policies be enacted with just one motion?
I think so.
Okay. Then would you like to move these policies be approved?
So moved.
Moved by Director Wu To, seconded by Director Bowman, good approval, policy 205, 301, 302, 303, 304, 306, 414, 418, 516, 516.5, 522, and 802, in case you were going to do a little light reading. Okay? Let's vote on approving these policies. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We have approved a whole bunch of policies with technical changes. All right, that brings us to number eight, administrative reports. Superintendent Salo?
Excellent. Good evening, Chair Evans Becker and board directors. I do not have a formal board report this evening, and I just want to remind the public that the second business meeting each month is meant to be very brief in order for us to have time for a robust study session, which we will be having as soon as we are completed with this business meeting. We have some important topics in that study session, including the continuation of our planning around the statutory operating debt plan that we have to create. So we invite folks to stay tuned after this business meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Future events will scroll. Is there a move to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Director Bowman?
Second.
Seconded by Director Wu To. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned at 6:12, and that's a new record.
It's almost on time, if you'd like.
So we will start the study session at 6:20?
I love the new agenda.
Does that work? 6:20?
Yep.
And we're back. It is 6:20 on Monday, October 20th. We are in the boardroom, and we are now beginning our study session. And when we have a study session, for those of you who haven't been before, we go around and introduce ourselves at the table. With this many people in the room, I don't think we're going to have everybody in the room to introduce themselves. We'll just have the table and all introduce themselves. So I'm Greta Evans Becker, board chair, and we'll go to the side.
Ellen Bassett, school board.
Connecticut Wu To, school board.
Aviva Helen Brand, school board.
Amy, our executive director of human resources.
Mick Walzberger, attorney for the school board.
Bob Yoff, assistant superintendent.
Anthony Williams, executive director of community education, athletics, and athletics.
Kristen Holheisel, chief financial officer.
Maureen Mullin, director of facilities and operations.
Charmin Wong, school board.
Teresa Salo, superintendent.
Renee Bowman, school board.
Molly Olson, executive assistant to the superintendent and school board.
All right. I'm going to hand this over to our superintendent for the, do we need to have a review of the working document?
Yep. Okay, excellent. The purpose of study sessions is to make sure that board members and the administration have an opportunity to discuss issues, review ideas, and share information in order for efficient and effective decision-making at the board table. As we review the board agenda, the working document tonight, again, this helps track the work that we're doing, aligns to the five rules of school board governance. So actually, the first, one of the topics on here, we actually added an item under board governance, because the board is going to be working through policy 215, school board vacancies and procedures. So that'll be one of the topics tonight. So we actually added this. It's a working document, so when things like this occur, we're able to add that. The other opportunities that the board has this evening for a study session and work session is under the board role of operational performance oversight and organizational direction, and like our previous study session a week ago, and as we will continue to work through over the next month, tonight we're going to focus on the statutory operating debt plan and continue to work through that process. Additionally, as part of that, as part of the discussion and the data sharing, we'll monitor, we'll use enrollment trends to plan strategically for current and future facilities, staffing, and budget decisions. So those are really the big things for tonight. We also have an opportunity, under board governance, to review and approve, or not approve yet, but review the board governance handbook, which I know has been worked on over the last several months. So, big night. So with that, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So first thing up for us is the school board vacancy discussion. As you know, Director Holmes resigned, and so the timeline for when someone resigns from the school board dictates the process for replacing that school board member. And so the process that is appropriate for a particular timeline, it's not before an election, it's a certain amount of days away from, anyway. The timeline is that we post the event, that we post the vacancy, asking for applicants, we wait two weeks, we review the application, we rank the applicants, decide on the number of interviews, and then we hold interviews with the applicants for school board, and then we make a decision. We appoint the new person, and then the new person can't take office for 30 days after being appointed. So it's, you have the two weeks, and then we have the interview process, and then we have the 30 days. So probably the new person won't take office until our first meeting in January, our organization meeting, in order to make read all of the timelines with our established reading dates. So if anybody has any questions at any time about this, it was all in your packet. Next thing, there's the media release for the vacancy, the application form draft. Have a chance to look at the questions. There will be different questions in the interview, and we are not, we're not having those questions tonight because we have time. Because if you look at the timeline, if you look at the timeline, the media release will be sent, today's the 20th, the media release will be sent out on the 23rd. All of the applications have to begin by November 6th at 5:00 PM, and then we will finalize our candidate interview questions on the 17th. Depending on how many candidates we have, we will narrow it down to be, did we say five or six candidates? We didn't, did we?
Well, that was lower than what you had said.
Five or six?
Seven.
I was adventurous. Okay. Anyway, we'll conduct the interviews with the selected candidates on November 20th, and January 5th, the appointed candidate will take the open box. Comments, questions, suggestions? I'll take a brief look at the questions on the application. Everybody, Director Long?
So I will go first since I kind of looked at it. I had time before you guys got it. I had some questions. I had some questions about number 12 on there. If we wanted to include that on there, it does say optional, but it asks for whoever is applying to include a link of their resume and some letters of reference. I'm not really sure. I mean, we didn't have to, we ran include our resume, and then we possibly talked about our resumes, and we did not have to have letters of reference either. So I kind of felt like it didn't need to be on there, but I did not need to solely make that decision.
And actually, we emailed back and forth, the two of us, because that's legal, and I agree. I would say unless... But we also decided to leave it up to the rest of the board. If you feel you need a resume or letters of recommendation, but to me, it's like, if they answer the questions and they have the interview, I think we should be able to make that decision. Director Bassett?
Well, I guess I'm more interested, or get them interested, in the rubric or criteria for, because people will fill out the information, we'll all get it individually. And so then we will... So the only question I have about the process is that independent criteria about the kind of qualities or what we're looking for, I think, does matter. And so whether that's just a summary statement that we all agree to, or whether that's an actual skills, they may be embedded in this form, but to ensure that we all, we get to the end of the road and have applicants that everybody feels like meet a certain level, and that's not criteria of it all, I'm just saying that in the interest of moving forward, moving quickly, moving unified, and finding the best candidate, that's my only interest. So I'm not totally clear on quite, you know, how to get to the criteria.
Okay. So the applicants have several short essay questions to answer on their application form, and then all the board members will get all of the applicants, but it will be a blind opportunity. There won't be a name. You won't be able to tell who actually is who who has done it. And then we do the director applicant score sheet for each question, how well as an individual board member, we feel that person had answered that question. And so then what we'll do is we'll compile the board answers and decide which candidates that will be interviewed. Okay. And then at a later study session, we will produce questions for during the interview. Those will not be seen by the public. We will get a copy of them to look at and go, I think question 12 should be like changed a little later. I think we should throw out this question and add another one, but the public will not see those questions at any time because that would be an unfair advantage for people to see the questions at any time. Then we'll pass those paper sheets back, and then we will use those because all the candidates will be asked the same.
This sounds like a traditional way to do it.
It is very traditional.
Sounds very fine, I guess, given some of the feedback we've gotten from the public about current, whatever you want to call it, you know, relationship management, whatever you want to say about it. Are there qualities that we are really looking for? And I think discussion about what those qualities are among our board without any prejudices, but, you know, you know, objectivity. Experience working on boards before. I'm just throwing out some random stuff.
Sure.
But I'm just saying, I do think if you can put this last year, if you give us a little bit of thought to that, you know, this stuff has been has been done tonight, although we're all here, so people have ideas about that.
Thank you. Director Bowman?
I would be interested in seeing a resume. You know, it doesn't have to be anything in depth, but I think in all of our campaigns, we've all talked about what we do for a living, we've talked about our experiences in the world, we even maybe even talk about previous boards that we've served on, or boards we may serve on in the non-public. So I think, I think if we're looking for qualities of an individual, resume speaks to those qualifications, various qualifications, so, which to me is what campaign literature is about and webpages are about during a campaign, where you're really giving that resume of yourself. So I would be supportive, not the letters of recommendation at all, no, but I would really be supportive of some sort of uptake on an individual. I think that's important.
Will we compromise on no letters of recommendation, but keep a brief, what do you say, brief resume?
Yep.
Yes?
I'll just stick with my original, I think 12 should just be...
None. Okay. And you...
What was your, I didn't hear your...
Okay. She wants to hear the question number 12, which is resume and two letters of recommendation.
Okay.
Director Bowman says, forget the letters of recommendation, but let's have a brief resume. What do you say?
Well, I'm still on my question I asked, which was not addressed, and so my comment really kind of had to do with qualities that we'll report.
And I think we'll get to that.
I'm not sure what you're thinking, but I know what I was thinking when I asked the question, you know? And so, in thinking about qualities, we probably will, this community has some terrific people, so I don't have any doubt we're going to get some great resumes. We get them all the time when we have the, if they see another phase. But I think the qual, I'm thinking about the board as it sits right now, the qualities that are really needed, you know, to eventually have us go forward, qualities, because anybody can write something on the resume, but I think we're all going to be looking at it differently when we talk about the kind of qualities we think are important. And so I was just interested in having that conversation. If nobody else thinks that that's important, I'm okay with it. I'm just taking care of me and just saying what I think is important, so that's it.
Thank you. But to answer my question, to answer my question...
Resumes, I think you're good.
Resume would be okay.
I'm okay with resume.
Okay.
Very good. I think that's...
Director Wunto, resume in, out?
I would be neutral to that because I think if somebody does not have the ability to put up a good resume, that should not disqualify them from being able to serve this board, I don't think.
Did you have a friend?
Yeah. I mean, there are also people with no job experience who may be parents, who have lots of PTA experience, volunteer experience, so I don't know resume is necessarily the best thing. I, I'll be honest, the whole, and this is the best process we can do, but the whole process makes me a little uncomfortable because I don't think we should be, it's hard for us to decide for the community, and I'd, but this is the best we have available to us right now. I'm not saying it's wrong. But one thing I want to make sure is that we're really, you know, as relying on the district's communications staff, which I know are great, is that we really, really get this out there, so that we really get not just the people who are really, you know, that we really get a broad swath, not just the people who are really tuned, but also really get that out there to the community so that we get a good broad spectrum of the community applying. I'd really like to hopefully get that out there and get as much visibility to that as possible to even make sure we have a good pool to serve. And then in terms of qualities, that's where I get, it gets a little tricky. Like, it's not a regular process. I'm not going to decide the qualities that our community wants having to serve us, serve them, right? I remember, maybe we all are. So that's a little trickier, but I hear what you're saying about a rubric because that's the best way to have an independent measurement to compare to, right? And it's not our feeling, or who we like, or who we don't like. So it would be good to have some sort of way to measure empirically if their kind of meeting was what we need or what we're looking for. I don't know how that works.
So we have some ideas for questions, and if you have questions that you would like to submit, submit them, but then when we put them out there, is it okay with you if we work for like some look force or some rubric type look force in that, when we present the questions to you, and then at a work session, we can just like, yes, no, this is working? Okay. Director Bassett?
So in response to what Director Hiller-Brant had just said, I guess for me, I'd just be okay with just hearing a verbal one word. What is a quality that you look for in a good school board member? It's really not complicated. For me, it's integrity. That's my word, integrity. You know, I mean, so if you have one word that you want to throw out there, fine. If you have none, that's okay. But I think one word, and then when we look through that, because I'm going to be looking for some integrity, how you measure that, I have no clue. You know, I mean, I agree with you. I don't have any clue, but I'm saying out loud what is important to me and a new, and a director to join this board, given where we've been and what we've gone through. I think integrity matters.
Thank you. Director Bowman?
I would like to get back to the notion of a resume. I don't believe a resume necessarily has to cast negative dispersions on someone if they don't read fully in, that was never my intent for a resume, but, I mean, because if you've been a full-time stay-at-home parent, there are some leadership skills there that you don't get in college. So, you know, and I, I know all of that, so, but having some listing of either things they've been engaged in, involved in, things that have been important to them for, in the community, I mean, it can be worded in ways other than a resume, but, and maybe that's another question, community engagement and involvement outside of school district stuff. So just an indicator of interests beyond, you know, based on life's engagements might be a better way to put it. So a life engagement document, not a resume if we want. And I would still, I would still advocate for that.
Okay. So your recap, your no resume, your free resume.
Well, change whatever words so it doesn't come out with a stigma to it. You know, I don't want a stigma attached to it. I'm looking for information here.
Okay. So have you read the other questions to say what information that I need is already in some of these questions?
Not really. Some, I mean, I guess maybe item 10 could almost be a resume, right? Or just bits and pieces of it.
Education, work experience, and other activities that have prepared you to be an effective school board member, that pretty much covers it. Okay? We're good, we're good. Can question 12 and use question 10?
Can they have the option of attaching a resume if they'd like to?
I'm not going to stop them, but...
I mean, we could ask them if they'd like to attach something else. They can attach it, or is that not going to be allowed?
Actually, it's important. Otherwise, it would be...
I think we have to have the same thing.
Okay. So, I have a clarified question. So could some of that be turned into the questions that we ask when we interview them? Like of what Helen was saying, you may claim.
That's it?
And actually, that's one I was just going to make. I do think one of these questions ought to go to what they think the various attributes of, you know, qualities and attributes a school board member should possess, and if they feel like they possess them, you know? And that maybe, that hopefully can get at it, you know? But I, I was just thinking that same thing, so thank you for asking.
Okay. So let's not discuss the questions for the interview here. Please email them to me or to me at Director Long, but no more than that, because we don't want to violate any rules. Okay? So we'll take the, we'll get the application out there, starting on the 23rd, minus question number 12. Superintendent Stoll?
I'm seeking clarification.
Okay.
All right. So is everyone okay with the press release draft? Any changes anyone would like on that? And otherwise, we're good, that will be going out on October 23rd.
Okay. If you haven't read it, I'll give you a minute. We got it through mail.
Yep, yep. So if there's no changes, great. Just want to get direction on that. So we will be ready to get that out, to communicate that widely. We'll also work with our schools to make sure that that's part of their newsletters and information, but we'll get it out to families and then figure out, obviously through social media and whatnot, but maybe we can work with the newspaper and see if we can do to get it broader. So both communications work on that. My next clarification, as I look at the timeline, so we post that on the 23rd, two weeks then would be the November 6th timeline, and it says applications are due by 5:00 p.m., so we make sure that that is very clear to people. And then on November 17th is when the board will finalize interview questions. So again, just wondering about, thinking about that process, because to your point, you'll want to make sure that, that you're not...
Don't wait till the 17th to get us the questions.
So they'll get questions to you, the two of you will finalize those.
Try and get them this week.
And the two of you will finalize those questions. And then lastly, November 20th is the interview date, so that will need to be an additional hold. Is that accurate?
Yes. Everybody that can't make the 20th, tell us now, because then we have to find an alternative.
It's a new date.
It's a new date. Because it's going, I mean, if an interview takes 20 minutes and then we have some deliberation talking time, it's going to be a full week. And then that night, we will decide, and we will have a special meeting, call to order, to take the vote on that candidate, because we're not going to like decide and then send everybody home and then announce it another day. So that night, we will do the interviews, we will decide, we will contact all of the applicants and tell them one way or another, and then we will have a meeting to actually do the vote and make a vision.
So depending on the number of applicants, we'll figure out what time to post that special business meeting for. The interviews won't be public, but the special business meeting, obviously, when we go down to that, will be.
Okay.
So just to clarify, this is a Thursday evening, and 6 o'clock? I started...
I think 5:00 does not work for everybody.
I just want to make sure I have an...
6:00 is there. 6:00, 6:00 is clear.
Thank you.
6:00. Let me go ahead and get a calendar invite out to everyone, please. Thank you. Okay. I think we have exhausted this discussion. Does anybody have anything else they want to bring up or say about the board vacancy and filling in at this time? Seeing no hands, we're going to move on to the operational performance oversight and organizational direction. This is an application for the cooperative between Armstrong and Cooper Boys Lacrosse. Executive Director William?
Oh, yes. This is just not actually a match, just a discussion around the cooperating for Armstrong and Cooper Boys Lacrosse. Over the last couple of years, we've seen a decline at both Armstrong and Cooper in participation for lacrosse. At Cooper, it's really hard for us to even field a team with under 10 athletes. And Armstrong, you know, we have, last we had 33 athletes, which was down from 44 to previous year, which once again makes it harder for us to field competitive levels in the Southwest African Conference. Wanted to bring it forward today, if there's any questions. But we'd like to seek a co-op, which would take place spring of 2026.
So this year, they're still playing?
No, this is...
Well, they're 2026, so come, you're up late. Got it?
Good.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions on this? This is the time to ask questions because at our next meeting, we will be voting on this. No questions? Everybody gets it? Director Bowman?
I know it's been a no-cut sport. Is that, is that going to change it? I'm just curious.
Not with, you know, unless you see a boom in our situation, I doubt that we would still be cutting. We can always add a level, because right now, like I said, we're barely filling two levels. So we could, some, we could go to three levels, but really, we hope to just get two solid levels.
Thanks. Thank you. Director Bowman?
Any idea for the decrease?
The system, there's not a real strong feeder system. We don't have a little school lacrosse, I hear there's not a school lacrosse. We have looked for, we have received funding to provide lacrosse equipment at the elementary level through an activities grant, you know, so that's something we'll be providing, but there's not a real feeder system. And it's not just in Robinson where you see that decrease for lacrosse, it's not really one of the most popular sports nowadays, so...
Is it included, you know, in any of the various cities, parks, and ricks offerings?
There is some, I know there are, there is a youth lacrosse league. I'm not sure what their numbers are.
Great. Thank you.
All right. No more questions? Thank you. Well, we'll see you at the next meeting to talk about that then. Thank you. All right. I believe, Vision 2030 SOD Work Plan Presentation of Phase One. Director Stoll?
Excellent. Thank you very much. I just want to draw your attention to the new packet of materials that you received this evening that you could add to the findings that you received. that you received last time. There was a request made by a board member to ensure that we have a strategic plan in the folder. So, we've got on the front side, mission, vision, values, our priorities grounded in equity. And then on the back side, the strategic themes, as well as the priority work for that. So, that is a document y'all have in front of you. Another request was to ensure that we had our equity magnifier as part of this. So, just as we're working through this, as the board is working through this process, ensuring that we're centering equity in all of our decisions. There's some key questions that board members, it may be helpful for you to consider throughout the discussion and to make sure that, that those have all been paid attention to. There's also some responses during the study session last Monday night. There were some questions around additional capacity of some of the buildings that we didn't have in the school buildings. So, Crystal Learning Center, the warehouse, the ESC, we've got that capacity for you. We also had questions from board members about what's some of the additional capacity that will need for some of the program, for the adult programming, for the community education offices, Robbinsdale Transition Center, Highview, and Robbinsdale Virtual Academy. So, we wanted to be sure to give you an indication of the spaces that we need as we're thinking about those programs. There was a question, I think, Director, who you had asked about residents by neighborhood. So, we have maps of that, and then Dr. McDowell will talk us through that as well. But those maps are in your packet as well. There were some questions about staffing model. And just so you know, we're in the process right now of reviewing our base staffing model, our service model from last year, and to determine where there may be gaps and how we continue to move forward the staffing. So, once decisions are made, we're really clear and able to discuss with staff and administrators the process once site consolidation takes place. There was also a question on the back side of the document about Minneapolis students receiving transportation. Would want to get those numbers and that data to you. There was a question posed about Sunny Howell. So, the information that we were able to find at this point is there. We can continue to look, but you can see that there were changes made to that. We want to address that question. And the last question was specifically around Robbinsdale Spanish Immersion School and if their programming was the same as others. So, just wanted to be sure that you had all of that information from, as a follow-up, from last Monday. You'll also see some additional, some additional data around that goes along with those, those new heat maps that Dr. McDowell will talk about. And I think with that, that is the new information in the packet along with the presentation. So, with that, the next slide, I'm just going to take us through a couple of slides and then hand this off to Dr. McDowell. But we want to remind you of the short-term timeline and where we are this evening. You've seen this multiple times. And we're going to continue to progress through the skill, the timeline and the schedule that we have given you. So, again, tonight is the place that we'll be talking about some of the criteria, as well as some of the options that are being considered. On the next slide, you'll see that same information in a bit more detail out of a visual. And we're just taking off the dates that you've already gone through. So, you've already gone from September 23rd, when the initial vision team recommendations were made, to two study sessions. And this is the third time now we've come together as we continue to talk about the Phase One recommendations this evening. And you can see again how this lays out over the course of the next several weeks, multiple meetings, making sure that board members have enough time for all of their questions to be answered, for all of the information to be gathered, so that you feel confident what's your position to, to make decisions. The next slide just takes us into that extended timeline. Again, while the full package of all of this is a multi-phase approach, we're still in the Phase One. You can see that highlighted piece this evening from statutory operating plan and reducing the footprint through building consolidation is what we'll be talking about this evening. Any questions, board members, on the timeline, the process of doing this right now? Okay. Then with that, Dr. McDowell, I am going to hand it over to you. Thank you very much.
Sure. So, just to help keep you things, what we changed up for you as a board tonight, if you haven't seen everything, you've got the presentation that Dr. Stallow started to go through this in paper form for you. And we're going to keep following that. However, before I begin the next slide, I want to jump back to what Dr. Stallow spoke through, which was this sheet and these heat maps. They had a question last meeting. The question was, at least as we understood it, are we able to use heat maps to discover which students are available inside of a school boundary? So, the available student compared with the number of students who actually attend the school that's in that boundary. So, these two sheets, this sheet and these heat maps, work in conjunction with one another. So, on this sheet, you will see the name of the school. Second column will be the students who are available. And what I'm going to draw your attention to is the first heat map, which is Forest. So, the first line is Forest, the first heat map is Forest. You'll see that in that first column, it says there are 1,615 students available. You'll also see that at the top of the heat map, it says 615. That's just kind of keep you grounded in it, because then what you'll see in the second column is that there's then 352 students from that boundary that attend that school. Does that make sense? Sure, does that answer your question?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Okay. So, then what I've done is for all the other buildings, the exact same thing. You go down the list, the heat maps correspond to that. And then just so that you have some information in the same place, on the far right of the sheet, you'll see that I've included the October 1 enrollment for that building of this year, and then what the current capacity is of that building. So, again, you can read across Forest. We know that there are 615 kids that are available. We have 352 that are in that school building, in that attendance area. It's 57% capture rate. The enrollment was actually 424 of this past October, and the capacity of that building is 701 students. So, it should hopefully give you a little bit of a chunk of information as you're digesting all of the different elementary sizes.
Yeah. While we have this nice little sheet, and your packet continues on, and it uses abbreviations, can you just go through, which feel that some of them are pretty clear, but?
Yes. I absolutely can. Let me get through that page so I get your abbreviation. So, LVE is Lakeview. SOB is Sonnison. ENE is Neal. And NOE is Noble. All right. If there's no other questions with this piece of information, I'm going to take this right into then the presentation.
Any other questions on this discussion?
Couple of slides from last time then. For, for everyone here, for the community, why are we talking consolidation for 26, 27? It really is to reduce our footprint and align the enrollment reality and the projected enrollment of the foreseeable future. The second piece is that building operations are a major financial piece of how we work out our statutory operating debt plan. What we have to try and balance are really two filters of how do we create a solution that had, is both efficient, but doesn't lose the effectiveness of what we want? And keeps equity at a peak? And then we also have to answer the question, is what we're doing not just desirable, but it's also feasible? Can we pull it off? And is it sustainable? Can we, regardless of what happens with a future referendum or not, can we sustain that footprint? We've talked about our guiding change a few times. This is the guiding change that as an administrative team, we've been using to try and get a couple initial options on the table for you. And then finally, those options right now really are the primary decision points. So, this is decisions are around using building capacities, utilization rates, enrollment, operational cost, building conditions, and locations primarily. And then that dovetails into those secondary decision points. But we start with the primaries. So, some information, and Ford, you have this in front of you. I'll walk through the slide as we have public and everyone trying to get a handle on, on where we're going with the conversation. So, if we consider our elementary buildings, our non-magnet enrollment is right around 2,608 students, which suggests, without anything else considered, that we should have five to six elementary schools. Lakeview, Sonnison, Neal, and Noble all have a capacity of at least 500 students. So, they, some have more, but at least 500. Yet, they enroll 228 to 280 students each. Each of those elementary schools, therefore, captures less than 50% of students living in their boundaries, so back to the heat maps that I shared. And each of these buildings was built between 1953 and 1964. Sonnison and Neal have the most facility needs, so condition needs, of the non-magnet schools, while Lakeview and Noble have some of the least needs from a condition point of view. Our side, Robbinsdale Spanish Immersion, while it's a magnet school, has the same facility condition needs as Neal does. So, it's actually in the same conditional position as Sonnison and Neal. We talked a little bit about that last night. Then if we look from a location standpoint, there is a need for a non-magnet elementary school to support the southeast corner. And this is from our perspective as we're looking at stuff. And lastly, Sonnison, Neal, and Noble have sites that are all conducive to future sustainability. Lakeview is very limited. Small footprint, it's a small geographic footprint around the building. The other buildings, you can, you can foresee some of either adding on the buildings, using the land for some other things that have come up in other conversations. So, these are some of the things that we are considering right now going into the options we're going to present. The next slide is really about element, or middle school considerations. Middle school, with a non-magnet enrollment of 1,626, which suggests one to two middle schools in addition to the students that are at Perry. Capacity and enrollment, Robbinsdale Middle School has a capacity of approximately 1,600. Plymouth Middle School, 1290. Sandberg Middle School, 1,500. If you look at their enrollment prospectively, they're at 571, 749, 306. That's where you see number one. When we have, when we have an enrollment of 1,600, we really only need one or two middle schools, when you're not considering anything else. The current utilization rates, therefore, 36%, 60%, 41%, and that 41%, I should say SMS, not RMS, it's my mistake. Please note that in the slide. That is inclusive of Highview in that building, at Sandberg Middle School. Currently, there's 237 students that enroll at Plymouth Middle School and are a part of the Spanish programming. And those facilities were built in 1956, 1958, 1967. Of all the buildings, all the buildings, not just middle school, Robbinsdale Middle School has the most facilities. Significantly the most facilities from the administration. Perry Crystal, while it's a magnet school, has an utilization rate of only 73%. We've talked about that a little bit. There's one, one pod in there that is used for different programming, but that's why you get the 73% because it's not at the same program rate. And then from a location standpoint, there needs to be at least one middle school somewhat centrally located, based on where all the other schools are located. It should not go unnoticed that the Robbinsdale Middle School site provides a significant option for future configurations. It's a, it's a really big, it's a land, it's a great location. It really could provide some optimal future reconfiguration. Any questions on those two slides? I'd provide some background information.
I'm just wondering about how we're going to keep small class sizes.
So, all of the, again, as I said last time, as a, as a board, you would have to decide differences in that. The considerations we are utilizing to make recommendations are based on our current programming, which would mean the current class sizes, staffing ratios.
Which would be at the cap, right?
The maximum would be at the cap. So, that's why when you look at consolidation of buildings, you really don't want to go any smaller than you have to, because you don't want to not leave yourself any room for growth or expansion, should that happen. Okay, I think I mentioned that last time. You have bubble classes that come through in the elementary. You've got to have space for that. We have special education programming, you've got to have spaces for that. You might have programming changes, but we have to anticipate to the best of our ability, that type of stuff. Our secondary buildings are already, they already get configured at an 80% utilization rate, because again, the secondary buildings, different than elementary school, don't have kids all in the same place all at the same time.
What are the questions?
Yeah. So, when you're talking about utilization, are you also including space for like therapists or counselors or the various ancillary items that kids need beyond their classroom space? Or is this just, or is this class ratios to classrooms without thought for other services that we provide in the elementary school? Or any of the buildings?
When we do these utilization rates in this manner, we are talking classroom space to student space.
And nothing else?
And nothing else of that kind.
Great, thank you, I clarify.
Director Vassilis?
I just want to make sure, number five, that's Sonnison Elementary and Noble, I mean Neal rather.
Number five?
Mm-hmm.
I just want, you know, exactly, and you know.
Yeah, Sonnison and Neal are the first two, and then Lakeview and Noble.
And we need a key on here like you were talking about last time, Director Vassilis.
I'm sorry.
Need a key on here like you were talking about at our last meeting.
Keys are helpful. I mean, you know, I mean, really.
You can absolutely do that.
Well, it's reasonable, but I, I... So, I guess I am thinking too, I would imagine we may see this information come back to us again in a future presentation. And no hurry, but as you bring it back to us for a different purpose, you may want to tell us some different things. As you bring it back, to the extent that the information you've already provided to us, that talks about the current level of utilization of the building overall, it's on a different map. If there's a way that that can be plotted together with the other data, tables would be helpful. So, you know, as you think about that question and you go forward, find a way that it works best to kind of express that to that. As you, we've talked about that before, but it was in a different presentation. At a different age, so to the extent that all of the data is in one spot, so you can compare apples to apples and oranges to, you know, whatever, that, that really is helpful, so you don't have to find a bunch of different documents, you know, and really, really focus on it at one time. But no rush. I'm sure you're going to share that. I'm sure you're going to share this with us. Yeah, us again, so, you know, looking forward to it. So thank you, that is not too much.
Okay, I'll move on. So before we get into the first two initial options, really this is a high-level overview. From our perspective, the options are to reduce the elementary footprint to five to six non-magnet elementary schools. Reduce the middle school footprint to one to two non-magnet middle schools. Both scenarios we're going to share tonight would remove Robbinsdale Middle School from the portfolio.
I think we wouldn't.
We would keep the site, the school would just be taken off, off-line.
Okay.
We would remove the ESC building, this building, from the portfolio and move staff to another site, or sites. And we would relocate the community head office space to CLC and run all that. So I say these things just to give you an idea. Because the slides I'm going to show next are graphic slides, and so there's a lot of moving parts going on. So just so you have this to look at as you're seeing stuff on the screen, these things won't change in the option.
And I just wanted to state for the record again, options, a starting point for conversations with the board. We had to start someplace with you all. No decisions have been made. So I know for a lot of people in this room and for a lot of people watching, they're going to see something on the screen and believe this is to be so. It's not the case. It's only October 20th, and we've got a road ahead of us. So your questions, your comments, the ideas, that's where we are right now. The long end question.
Oh, I just wanted you to spell out what you mean by non-magnet.
So.
Exactly, what are you saying about our non-magnets? Or, yeah, about our magneted schools?
So at the last meeting and what I spoke to was that our, our plans had no, we had no plans to change mag, our current magnet schools. So the schools we're talking about here are non-magnet schools.
For 26, 27. So the three magnet schools at the elementary would be C, Hilton Lane, and RSI.
And then the, for the middle school then?
Fair Crystal.
Fair Crystal.
That would not be touched.
For 26, 27. We did say, though they, we did say there's the possibility they could be in different buildings, but that we wouldn't be looking at site consolidation for 26, 27.
But in to come, there might be changes to that.
Correct. And that's, we've got to remember, get us to the site consolidation, the planning for 26, 27, so we can complete the statutory operating debt plan. At that point in January, we start looking again at vision forward for how to continue to make our district what we need it to be.
All right. So in the first option, I will walk through the different. In the first option, Lakeview would be split to Northport and to Noble. So essentially what happens is Lakeview would no longer, we would still have Lakeview as a building, but it would not function as an elementary school. The students would be split depending upon their address to Northport or to Noble. The second move would be Neal moving to Sonnison or Sonnison moving to Neal. Those are two similarly sized buildings. It would simply be the decision there is which, which building do we want to keep with the students in it and which might we use for something else? There is an option where RSI could move to the building that wasn't being used. So for example, if Sonnison students moved to Neal, you could potentially move Robbinsdale Spanish Immersion to Sonnison. It would be more likely because of capacity that Neal would be the place it would need to go because of the number of students. Technically, right now, we would have to do more detail on that, but technically, RSI as of today could fit into Neal for sure. The next move, Robbinsdale Middle School would move to Sandberg Middle School. Right now, we're thinking that RVA would run out of Armstrong and that Highview would move to Lakeview Elementary. It could also move to Sonnison, it could also move to Neal depending upon which one was open. And then, as we said in the previous slide, we would move the ESC Service Center with Highview, in this case, to Lakeview Elementary, and then community head offices would move up to the CLC building. So in this option, we would still own the property, but Robbinsdale Middle School would be offline. ESC, this building, would be offline. And one of the three elementary schools, either Sonnison, Neal, or RSI building would be offline.
When you talk about moving the functions of this building, that includes like the print shop and all that too because that's moving.
It would, it would be, so as an example, we go through all these options. The first phase is for us to get a sandbox around, okay, what buildings are we comfortable with doing this? The next phase will be, because we've kind of scoped out at a very high level, will all of this, whatever this is, fit in this building? Technically, yes. When we get to the next sandbox, direction from the board, or it says, oh, you're not touching that building no matter what, all the way up to, yep. Go play with all of them and see what actually fits. That's when now Kristin and Maureen, myself, really go right devil in the details of, will this fit here for sure? Will this fit here for sure? And come back. Those are part of the reasons why we have to stage these conversations starting today. Again, making no decisions, but starting today so we can get that sandbox going so that by the end, the tail end of November, we can make a decision. Because it's going to take time to really dig in and come back to you and say, okay, we can do this, but to your question, we may not be able to bring the print shop with us. The print shop might have to go here if we do that.
Director Massey?
So I think it probably will be in phase, the next phase, the next step. But since early on, we heard the proposal about new build. No new build considerations are here. And new builds with regard to a new elementary facility and the signing of it, should we go there? Or a class elementary, magnet district?
I think it's a, I think it's back to your question you asked several meetings ago, Rob. As we, as we blend, right? As we blend. And I think that while we're thinking about 26, 27 right now, those type of questions are ending up in the foreshadowing, right? Okay, what if? If we do this, then what's a potential possibility? What's a potential possibility? Because whatever we decide for 26, 27, we have to be able to sustain that if we don't get the funding. Because right now, the only funding we have is to replace like-for-like. We don't have money, dollars, to do additions to or improvements of its like-for-like.
Sure.
However, we also don't want to shortchange ourselves or create unintentional additional moves of kids should we get to a position where we, the community says, yes, we're willing to approve or go for.
And theoretically, some of that movement you just foreshadowed potentially with these closures. Let's just use them for a perfect example. If that were to happen with some of these, some of the moves you've talked about already, that could be sustained, bond or not, is what I think you're thinking. However, if bond for something new was to be on the table, then the, some of this configuration could then fit into that.
Yep, absolutely. That's where, um, I'll click through, type through all. That's where the secondary decision points on the slide start to overlap. You're exactly right.
Okay, I, um, thank you.
Director Long, you have a question? Yeah. So you had mentioned RSI could fit into possibly two buildings with where it is right now. Does RSI right now have a waitlist and all students waiting to get in there?
I don't, I don't have the answer on my mind right now with RSI.
Because I'm just thinking back. I know when it moved into the building that it's currently in, it outgrew that building. So I'm just wondering, if it has a waitlist currently, do we need to plan for that kind of growth or not?
You can check on the waitlist. I didn't.
We can check on the waitlist, but to the best of my recall, if there is any significant waitlist, it would be kindergarten. The other grades, whether people have made different decisions because as they go on and it's, you know, more of a specialized program, they, there might be a few people, but it's not significant once you get past the kindergarten, maybe first grade level.
Okay, so do we see any potential growth that kindergarten, just have a waitlist?
If we add a kindergarten section and it'll be. Then it would grow into, yeah, it would grow into.
So what I, what I would add to that or bring it back to is that is the rea, that's one of the reasons why the number three for RSI is in purple.
Yes.
We, we could move it to a place that it fits, even staying where it's at. Unless we had a referendum to add on to. We don't have a place bigger for it in this, in this move where it could grow into at the end of elementary. And the reasons for moving it would simply be a decision back to condition. Does it make more sense to keep RSI in play as RSI? Or do you move it to Neal that has less condition needs? Something I can consider.
I think the biggest challenge when, when looking at this is in absence of what does the future design of the program look like? That's the hard part, right? Because right now, we are focused on 26, 27 with keeping in mind what we can reimagine our deal to look like. And so, you know, is it, is RSI, and this came up with a vision committee presentation, is it a, is it a K-5? Is it a, is it a through eighth grade? Is it, I mean, that's a conversation that presumably the board will have as we move forward. We're just trying to make sure we, whatever we do, we can achieve financial, the best, the most financial efficiency as possible just for 26, 27 without locking us into future programming decisions, without you actually having the opportunity to make those, to have those conversations.
Okay. So the second option we have for tonight is the starting option. In this option, Noble splits between Sonnison and Lakeview. First move, Neal also goes to Sonnison. Same thing, this one, RSI goes to Neal. We just called that out in this one, but you would, you would have the same situation as we just got to discussing. Robbinsdale Middle School, to Sandberg, RVA, to Armstrong High School. Highview goes to Neal.
No.
I'm sorry, Noble. ESC goes to Noble. And the community head offices go to CLC. So in this option, Robbinsdale Middle is offline, ESC offline, and potentially RSI offline.
We should say Sunny Hollow.
It is Sunny Hollow.
Yeah, just to not confuse the.
Sunny Hollow technically.
Not to confuse the programming with the building.
So just a couple of questions. One, just curious why RVA going to AHS when I think I remember, I don't have my binder from last time here, but that Armstrong was at 102% capacity and Cooper's not at above, above capacity. So I was just curious about that. And then, well, I'll let you answer it.
Yeah, well, in reality, RVA can theoretically be anywhere. We, there's these options. We put it with Armstrong High School for the time being. The RVA students currently on Wednesdays come in to Highview. Armstrong would have the ability to do that. We, we've gone back and forth with that one because part of it is we believe we've got students that choose RVA because they don't want to move back to the high school. And so maybe that's not the best place. No different than anything else when we come up with the options, we come up with them at this point in time, and then you're sitting there thinking about it, you go, well, what about this and this? At the time that we came up with this option, the previous option, the thought was, let's have RVA go to Armstrong. We know they could handle it if they needed to go there one day a week. It's online the rest of the time.
And it wouldn't have to.
Yeah.
Just to Bob's, to Bob's point, we had this conversation three hours ago. It wouldn't have to be separated from Highview.
And then my other question just was.
It would save us more money if it was separated from Highview for staffing. It, I should say that, it potentially could because if you have students that are taking online option, and I'm, I'm really going rogue, I believe there are more Armstrong, oh gosh, I'm in trouble. My hypothesis right in this moment is that Armstrong has, there's more students maybe coming from there. And with staffing considerations, if it's not a full-time choice for those students, are they already receiving programming in that particular high school building? And therefore supervision, like your supervision, everything's already built in to being an online model for various classes throughout the day where they're still in attendance in a particular building. I think that was at least initially why it was looked at as that way. But true, it can go anywhere. But if there's more Armstrong students attending and they're not being full-time online, that would be a good reason why and it's staffing and supervision then.
My other question was just, I know one of the big things in all the transition and change for folks is that losing their community, their school community, and both of these options have splitting a school. And I assume that there wasn't, but I'm just going to ask for the sake of just clarity. Is there, was there any possibility or any option where we wouldn't be splitting up the school community?
Um, just to go back to some of the other options to answer that question.
Because I, I know that for, for folks, that's going to be, you know, because moving a whole school to another building is different than being split up from, from your, you know, the people that your, your community went over the years.
I can say that there was conversation specific to RSI about, to your point, like the cohort, right? Like these students are with, with their classmates and so whatever building, whatever building, they're still with their classmates. The challenge you get when you start looking at 26, 27, and those decisions, stay in those decisions regardless of what happens moving forward. If, if you don't look at potentially splitting one, the impact of future decisions might actually give you more transition for those students than moving them all together and then having to split them up later into true boundary changes depending on what happens with building decisions moving forward.
And with this option one and option two, in the elementary buildings, is there room for early childhood in all of the buildings when we're moving?
Yes.
Other schools in?
To the question, to the splitting. Splitting Lakeview was intentional because of Highway 100. That, that was the rationale there, right, wrong, or different? That was the rationale?
Yeah, it crossed.
Good, crossed 100. It, it allowed for that. Noble in this one, Noble would all fit in. Noble, in this one, Noble would all fit in Neil. You could, you could take that building and combine it into Neil, but you wouldn't necessarily have to move kids up to Lakeview. So just to answer your question, there are some scenarios where you could, you could take the smaller schools and they would, there's multiple schools that, right? Because Neil is, Neil's got a capacity of over 700 kids. So, so the, the simple answer is yes, without considering other stuff. You, you could.
There is also an open enrollment component too when you're looking at this to say, I mean, back to the, the residents within those attendance areas, but are they, where else are they drawing from? And then the distance of which you're moving them.
Director Mason?
So, I think that was a good question. I think that you go, my assumption that you're going to go back and think about that question across the board. Yeah, so I mean, I don't have an answer right now, but I think it's a good question. So my question has to do with a couple of things. One is the bus garage. If ESC is offline, and you know, we've had challenges with that for 20 years, not longer, and they're not going away. So, at some point, when the plan comes back for the, all the properties that are offline, the plan for managing the real estate. Because of course, as you know, that's a board decision along with the administration about selling property. And so, and then to what end? You know, and so I think that when we come back with another plan, you know, at some point and prepare to go forward, having a companion, maybe some options or thoughts about what, what that might be with the layout would be helpful. So we can envision what the choices and options might be. Because I think that that, that goes hand in hand. You know, what's the best choice, what's the best direction type of thing? And so I, a question was asked about, I was thinking about CA, CD offices to the learning center. And so then, which goes to the New Hope Learning Center, then I don't see that on here. But I'm assuming that the students who are currently enrolled there can go to, will go to other facilities. They will or will not, I don't see that mentioned.
No, for 26, 27, New Hope Learning Center, we didn't do anything with.
Okay, so that stays the same. I didn't see it here, so I was.
Yep.
Okay.
Director Bechera, I just wanted to, to let you know, and again, to fully answer your question, but the EFC, where the, where this building is and the bus garage, it's two parcels. It's broken into two parcels, right?
It is.
I do know that.
Yeah, I did know, the public did, I just wanted to address that. So we could maintain, if we needed and wanted to maintain the bus garage, we could do that, and then get rid of this building.
However, the bus garage has a whole bunch of problems, as you know.
It does.
So, so.
But that's a bigger conversation.
Bigger conversation, future conversation. I just, just want to have it in the consciousness and then have some forecasting when we come back to that conversation, because that would be part of the next generation.
The next round, yes.
Director Humber, just one other thing, I'm just pointing out, the last time we tried to move Highview, it was a huge political issue because, because moving those kids became a real issue. Nobody wanted those kids in their neighborhood. And so I just wanted to put that out there, that if you're moving them to what was an elementary building, that may become an issue. They were supposed to move into the Pilgrim Lane building and maybe not want those kids there. And I'm saying that in quotation marks, because that is not how I view children who have alternative learning needs. I was very upset and disappointed in my community that I live in, that they reacted that way. But, but that was the reaction of the community. And so, they wound up staying at Sandberg for that reason. So I just want to put that out there, that, that may be an issue.
We can pick up, we're having trouble hearing.
Oh, yeah, just that the community did not, in, in and around Pilgrim Lane, did not want to have alternative high school students in their neighborhood, which I think is a shame, because they're just high school kids who learn differently, but they rejected having them there. So just wanted to put that out there, that that could be a political issue. Frankly, my experience with them, working in the same building with them, is that they are wonderful young people. And I enjoyed every minute that I was in the same building with them. But I just wanted to put that out there, that that could be an issue.
And there was some ages, age groups.
They are.
Some discussion about, there was some discussion about mixing age groups at that time, you know, elementary and some of the Highview. That, that was part of the conversation. Maybe you didn't hear that part, but that was part of the whole range of that whole conversation. So I mean, I, so I know that there was a lot of pushback, but I just wanted to share that with you, that there also was some consideration of every elementary.
That was before it was going to be an elementary school.
I understand, I, all I'm saying is that that was part of the conversation, that's, that's my only point.
Director Long?
So I'm just wondering about the cost to, like, if we move this building to an elementary school, what's going to be the cost in changing things, you know, bathroom facilities, classroom into office spaces?
Yeah, we don't have a price tag now. The con, the brief conversations we've had, because we of course wanted to bring it here, is we know there would need to be some things, but we really believe it could be very minimal, especially in the, the near future. You know, there'd be plenty of space, so we could split some classrooms. Obviously, we need some cubicle spaces, things like that, but some of the classrooms may just be opposite without doing a lot of construction. Because again, if we can't say that that move is a permanent move from, you know, forever in law or forever forward, and we don't have any funds for construction, we, we wouldn't do a lot. I don't know how realistic that is, Mary. There'd be some things we'd have to do, I recognize.
Yeah, it's your my restroom.
And I think it becomes, for this building, it becomes, that's part of the question. The other question is, what's the cost of keeping this building running versus figuring out a different solution for this building? Especially when there's the potential of selling this building. So it's, it's a, it's not just a one question question, it's a multiple layered question. And what is the net result? And what is the potential long-term result? Because what happens in consolidations is, and correct me if I say this incorrectly, is you don't necessarily see all of your savings in the first year. You see it the second year, in the third year, and it's a compounding piece, which is why it's, it's got to be really strategic. And it goes back to, now use the, the Highview question. In any of these, Highview needs to have a different home, whatever that is, because we need the space at Sandberg. So the strategic decision is, we have to create space at Sandberg if the Ramessville Middle School move is there. Which means, Highview has to have a home somewhere. So where will that be? And in our estimation, we think Highview should move with the ESC at this point. That makes the most sense. So as you're considering and looking, we, we're at that spot we were last time, right? This is a meeting of non-closure again. However, it's also the point of, of the meeting where it's, ask, sorry, what we did last time, what more information would be helpful? I know a couple of people, I've taken some notes here, a couple of people have already said it, but in your viewing of what we presented as of tonight, is there any additional information that would be helpful for us to get to you?
Director McDowell, please clarify something. So Director Humber brought up a question about, in one of the scenarios, Noble, would it fit for Noble and Neil to fit inside of Sonnason with Sonnason's current enrollment?
Yes.
Okay, so Noble wouldn't have to be split necessarily between Sonnason and Lakeview.
I gotta double check that. I may, I may have pulled this in wrong. I gotta check.
I'm not sure about that. No, I don't think they can.
Was that the one?
And then there's, yeah, I don't, I don't know if they can, and then there's also the consideration that you're leaving that bottom quadrant without an elementary school.
Yeah, and, excuse me. No, I was just saying, it's a good point too, because someone you like, I also thought of the busing.
Yep.
Piece of that, that's an awfully long way to bus up kids.
And I think that's part of the, as, as Dr. McDowell said, the digging deeper as we continue to.
It's a good point.
Get closer or get options that you want us to look into more because of your comment about what about some of these office spaces? What about center-based special education programming, which impacts capacity? So those are some of the deeper dives. Once we get to a place where you say, hey, is this viable? Can we put those three buildings there? What's that look like?
Superintendent, so I'm there, I'm, I'm Dr. Humber's question. I think that as the team goes back and looks at, looks at all of this geography, I think also demographics. I'm, I'm not a fan of social engineering. That's, that's not my thing. People live where they live. However, we don't want to exacerbate any things. And in addition to that, I think you mentioned, or somebody mentioned, future. If you do this, then that downroll you. You may end up having to do it anyway.
You might.
So I think that, I, so I, 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 just the same work and energy you put into this, and was able to come back and give us some, here's kind of what our best guesses are, that's the wisest move for me, if you do that. Because my assumptions, you'll be able to get at all of that. Because the transportation will come into it, the, the demographics will come into it, the zip codes and where people live, and I think it's a valid question asked on split. If you cannot help it, what do you do? But, but parents will choose with their own feet. You know, I don't think we need to try to be choosing for, you know, I mean, certainly not going to be trying to social engineering, people live where they live.
Director Humber, yeah, just to confirm. Can't fit, you can't fit all of Noble and Neil in the Sonnason, you cannot fit all of Noble in the Sonnason.
It does bring up a good question. I, is it possible for next time to have an estimate about this would do in terms of the demographics? I suppose most of them would be the same, because you're just shifting parents, but.
The one that would, the one that would potentially shift would be an option.
Yeah, the, which one?
Option one.
Option one, you could see a potential shift when you split Lakeview up into Northport, depending. But a lot of it depends upon then boundaries.
Yeah.
To actually, you have to have a boundary map, redrawn boundary to really see which addresses match.
All right, is it okay or is it great, you're focused on this, I was not sure.
It's all right.
Because Lakeview is also one of our bigger schools with registration from Minneapolis, right?
Yeah, it has.
Sorry, I don't know if we have that information somewhere. I guess it's, it's better.
And they are, with our recent change, with this year's change in transportation, that's not, not to be presumptive, but that's where the transportation goes, for depending on the zip code you're going to. So I don't know how much is it, is it a choice to a building, or that's, I want your district, and I will take where the bus brings me.
I was just looking, because Noble's 53, and I was just thinking, either way, it's just not going that. But it's also in terms of percentage of overall students, not hugely distorted.
And after that location piece comes. In addition to location and then sustainability of the site, regardless of what's next. And how do you, how do you navigate, what's the least potential risk?
That's why the first round of heat maps was really important. We, even before we got them, we had some assumptions about neighborhood schools or where students were, were living and attending the school, and the heat maps just showed us some different information.
I was wondering if there, it would be possible to get some information about busing and what that.
Bussing and what that might entail for some of the bus routes with some of these options.
Director Humber?
Just one more quick question, just, yeah, just for future information, you don't have to answer it now.
Yes, I will try. There's, the challenge is, is there's, there's a significant amount of choices that still remain that make it, like, if it could just even sort of get narrowed down a little bit, that helps, because that's a lot of options that are still on the table right now.
And then the other thing I'm wondering too about, like, public transportation bus routes moving to Highview. You know, some of those students might want to access public transportation to get to school, and are, what are, how close are these different sites to that? My one question to do with Lakeview, if we're looking at splitting Lakeview, it seems to me that we're not doing IB next year, especially if we split it. But if we're not, like, is it off the table, off the ga, I just want to understand the parameters.
I think that's a, a great question and discussion. Now, especially if we're, if, if the direction is Lakeview and NARMS going offline.
Right.
Those are, those are two IB feeders. Doesn't mean we would have to do anything immediately different with Cooper, but it'd be part of the conversation for sure.
And it folds into, right, that part of the conversation, that is just decisions for our statutory operating debt plan. There, there's a piece of this that's coming that, that is going to have to be figured out that goes along with statutory operating debt, that is a building, it's programmed. That's what aren't we going to spend money on? That can be a part of that statutory operating debt plan year one, year two, year three, year four, year five.
Yes.
I'm going to, I'm going to have somebody else be talking to you that way. So, so the other thing too is that the, the whole purpose of having magnet schools is to magnetize people to come to schools. So depending on what the program offering is, the strength of the program, and you just said that you're going to be factoring that and thinking about that as we go forward, talking about the statutory, statutory operating debt playing, the program that goes in, because that is a factor. You abandon the magnets, and you split all the schools. And I've, even at the local level, one of the questions that I had posed, and I think I see it in here, I have to unpack all this, is to see if every building, what's special is happening. Because each of the neighborhood schools have some kind of a special focus, you know. And so, it may not be the magnet level, but they do have, you know, their own ethos. So understanding what that is, I think is important as well. And I, I thought I, as I was swimming through and following you, I thought I saw a little bit of that. I don't know that I saw as much as my question asked.
Your question asked specifically if I had to call along curriculum. So I wasn't, I, I didn't, I, I honestly, we.
I, I understand. It's only, you know, it's so.
So you're, what I hear your question mean, so, and I'm confused by it, because I don't know that I could say our non-magnet elementary schools have a particular focus.
I'm giving example. For example, Noble, they're very attuned to technology or, you know, STEM, you know, kind of incubator STEM concept, and, you know, they, they come and present it. That's something that they care about and hold as a high value and, and program toward it. So I, I, it's my belief that I've talked to different principals and people around the district, that each one has their own kind of culture that they support. So that's really my question. And so if I said curriculum, I really meant, what is their, what's their special sauce that they think they have in their building? And that can be a combination of programming and curriculum, but what is it? And that can be a combination of programming and curriculum, but what is it? Because I think they believe that many of them have it, if not all, just because they're not a magnet. Because I think that's a part of you, of this whole equation. And I'll further say that I think that keeping the magnet schools for the next school year the way they are, and perhaps college in the future, is, has, you know, has value, because we wouldn't be having magnets if they didn't have value, in my opinion. However, the neighborhood schools are an important part of the equation. So to the extent that we're going to infuse support into the district, and reimagine the district, to the extent that we can really support and highlight and understand better, what is offered at whatever local neighborhood school the people land at? What is that? What is that special sauce? Because I believe they all have, you know. And if they don't have it, what can we do to kind of tush it up a little bit? You know, because I think that's just as important as saying that we're going to keep our magnet schools. It's a partnership. There's not two, well, some people say there's two districts, but there's only one. You know, and there's only one big potluck. And so it has to be shared across the district, and so, in a way that really leaves up everyone. It's not just moving kids across the district, it's actually trying to see what, what they need, you know, and then try to provide some of that. It's just, if we're going to be doing this reimagining, I don't see a reason why we're going to talk about that.
We will be. That's not fair.
I think, I think you are. But I just wanted, you know, I just have to get my little plug in.
Director Long? Yeah, to kind of go along with what Director Bassett is kind of saying, like, you know, just like looking at this, the two options here for me, it feels like, like I can just feel my emotions, you know, just kind of, you know, knowing, like, I've talked to families at Lakeview, and how they love their principal, they love their staff, heard stories about how, oh, my kid was a weird kid, you know, and then, like, that's a whole community that we are dismantling. And that kind of gets back to the last question that I asked at, at our last meeting that we had on the 13th, like, you know, these families have relationships with the people in their school, their, their teachers, you know. You know, Ms. Smith, making it up, I don't know if Ms. Smith teaches at Lakeview, but, you know, Ms. Smith, so what are, what are they going to do when Ms. Smith isn't there to be the kindergarten teacher for any of their kids that went through there again? And so right now for me, it's just really like, I can just feel it in my body, you know, and I, I can hear the stories that families have told me, that families that have talked to me about it. And yeah, I just, I don't know. And, and I do know from being seen Highview, that that was not a good place for it either, had it smushed in where its current location is. So, yeah, I don't know, right now I'm just, and so I'm, really am hoping that we have some time to mull over this, and it isn't like we're making, oh, choose option one or choose option two today. But like, I agree with you, Director Bassett, there is, there's like something that's special about that school, where it's located, what they've created there with all of these schools. And so that just gets really, you know, sorry, I can just like feel my skin starting to, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that from center. We grapple with it every time we talk about this. And, and that's why we're sitting here. What are your ideas? What other options haven't we brought forward? Because these moves, moves have to be made. If, if we want to continue to be sustainable as a district, and you all know it, and I know it, and our community knows it, then it doesn't make it easier at all. But we're going to have to do something. We can't keep operating the number of buildings that we're operating. And I don't want that to sound cold and have a lack of empathy, because you're exactly right. We're in these schools as often as we can be, and they're all amazing. So how do we get us, ourselves to a better place?
Sorry, I forgot my job. But anyway, so one last thing, let's kind of, kind of add one thing that may be tricky. So one of the things that we've talked about in the past is our commitment to our cities. Now, so the end result that we come up with, being mindful of the seven cities that we operate in, and the families that live within those cities, and the schools that feed them. So I, I'm pretty sure you're already thinking about that somewhat, you know, but I just think that that's an important, you know, kind of conversation that I hope that gets built in, so we can, we can talk about that, or at least fa, and factor it at some point, maybe not all at the same time. But I think factoring that's in that whole location geography question, because it's moving the schools, it's moving the families, it's all of that. But that's where all of our, the people who support us, they all live in these communities, and they all stake, you know, so I'm, I'm quite concerned about that as well.
Director Loungret?
Yeah, my sense about, if you're talking about city leadership, they see excess property in school districts going from non-taxable to taxable property. So I seriously doubt you're going to hear a mayor of any of these cities going, well, we're going to have more taxable property. So I don't think that's going to be a problem. And my other, my other concern too is, is that to Director Long's point of, you know, what happens in a community, or what happens in a school, and the emotional part of it, I also know that the 180 staff that had to be let go because of the financial situation that we're in, was just as stark in all of these buildings and for all of those families. And I believe, I'm hoping that with the process that we're currently using, which is to have some lead time to it, have some time to it, have the opportunity to ask the questions and include and engage the community with it, will not make the pain go away. But, you know, we're just, the reality is, is we're all going to have to fail. And that's unfortunate, but that is the situation that we are in at this point. So I'm just hoping that the dream part of it is going to sustain us, that as we reimagine and we dream, we can think really good things that should sustain us through some of the pain. Because as much as we think of our current situation as being perfect and we should never change it, many of us have been through situations in life where, when we got to the other side, it was like, wow, this is different, this is better, this is. So I don't want us to also lose sight of the dream side of it, where we can actually increase equity for all students in this building to a level that's, that's, that I can be proud of. So I'm going to hang on to the dream for a while, and, and, and look for what we can build into what we have to hang on to.
I wonder, why are we taking New Hope offline and moving them into the elementarys? Isn't New Hope early childhood right now?
Early childhood, they have a child, family education, special, early childhood and special education.
Too much to imagine.
And it's more than just LEPK, right? It's more than just preschool, because they serve families from birth through, right? So, you know, some of it doesn't make sense to live within a K-5 school, pre-K-5 school, because they serve students from 33 months, you know, at birth.
And a lot of that's the staffing efficiencies as well with some of those early childhood and special education programs and some of that. So again, for this first move, that wasn't, that's just not being considered right now.
And then I have a question about Fairville Run Lane. With community end moving out, is that allowed for extension at Fairville Run Lane? Or are they bursting at the seams there?
So it would allow us to do expansion, it would allow us, they currently have no center-based special education program. So it would also allow us to consider that. What else have we touched about?
Okay, that makes sense.
Director Muto?
Yeah, so that was going to be my question is, is there a way we can have some of the assumptions that you guys came up with, when you came up with these options, right? Okay, what about, I have a hundred, right? What other programming needs can we foresee in the future that will benefit the district? I know we send some kids to different districts, and then it talks about bringing those kids back into our district, if we have them to be honest. Can we hear of some of those assumptions going forward? I think that would be very helpful.
And we certainly welcome, right? This is a discussion. We welcome, what, what else? Because you've been thinking about this too. So what, what else have you been thinking about and that we can share? Because we've had more than two options over the last month. We've had multiple options that we've looked at, and these were two that we wanted to start with, but tell us what you're thinking. Tell us what you're looking at, and maybe it's something we've considered, and maybe it's not something we've considered.
Director Wu?
Yeah, I, I think I also want to offer a third perspective here, that the, I know the emotions that are going to come no matter what schools are closed, right? But I want us, as a community, to start thinking about the ultimate goal, right? Parents don't care about moving their kids from one part of the district to the other part if it means they are receiving the best education, right? So there's been talks about programming already, like the IB program. Is that really working for all schools, right? Is it working for the kids in those schools, right? So if those kids are going to have the opportunity to something new and bigger, then it shouldn't really matter which part of the district that program is moving into, or not moving into. So I, I want parents to start thinking about, or the community to start thinking about some of the other opportunities that we are going to have, right? Because personally, I think some of the programming that we have, we need to change. And this will offer us the opportunity to be able to do that.
Did you ask, did you bring that?
I did.
Okay, I have a question. So if Ivy moves to Lakeview, and look to the math, Ivy and RBA move to Lakeview, how much of Lakeview is still available? I mean, I don't know how many rooms Ivy takes up, or.
It would be full.
If the two of those move to Lakeview, it'd be capacity.
So combining that question with Director Wu's question. So the assumption with the lake is that it's two stories, for example. The other piece is that it has a, the current entrance at Lakeview is set up where it could be a natural enrollment center. And then the ESC would take over one floor, and there's, there's another entrance on the other side of the building, and Hive View could take the other floor, whichever that was. The other thing that happens at Hive View, that's a little, or at Lakeview, that's a little unique, is the gym is on the second floor, and the cafeteria is on the first floor. So that said though, between ESC moving there and Hive View, it would, it has the capacity to do that, it's, that's what it would, unless it was added on to then at some point in the future, that's all that it could do.
My question was Hive View and RBA, not Ivy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was what I think. But I understand, there'd be extra room then.
Yes.
If it was Hive View and RBA?
Yes.
Okay.
Director Long?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to share just like a counterpoint to that IB programming. I'm not sure if we've ever really done that to its full potential here. I can, I know in Minneapolis, I worked at one elementary school that was really into their IB programming, and they took advantage of, I know at RSI, how they have, I don't know what, I forget what the program is called, they have people come from Spain and other Spanish-speaking countries to like work with the students there. That was one of the things that this elementary school did, is they brought in those people, and they did Spanish with all of the classes. They would push into the rooms, and it was almost like it was, I want to call it specialist by teacher language, but prep, like a prep provider. Sorry, that's probably the better language. A prep provider would be these Spanish speakers would come in and immerse the kids in language. So I don't really know that we've really fully jumped into the IB wagon. I almost feel like that, you know, when we talk about magnets, or making a school special, if we really jumped into what that whole IB thing is, and not what it looks like for elementary schools, I think that, that could possibly be something that families could be interested in, especially with the language components that you could insert in as, you know, prep providers for students.
And, sorry, just to add to that, I'm not.
I wasn't saying it was bad, but that just popped in my head.
The program myself is designed to be a great program. It's an international program, right? But the way we are watering the program in our district, in the two schools of the communities in which they are, is not working for those kids. If we look at the data that was presented, I want to say either March or April, when I first joined the board, about what the IB programming was doing, or giving to the students, as a parent, I don't think that's what the program is intended to do, right? So it can be better, I agree with you, but is it working right now, right? But that will be a debate for another day, I'm sure, when we get to programming.
Well, I think that's, that's part of we, you know, I think it's, while we're trying to keep, right, these 26, 27 decisions intact, it's going to spill over, you know. We, we are going to need to find more cost savings for the statutory operating plan than just the buildings. And so then we do start talking about programming, right? And we say, yep, we could continue to invest, and maybe invest more in IB. Is that the biggest thing for our book? I mean, that's part of all of these conversations.
Director Bassett and then.
So, so a question I have, I'm looking at the current short-term timeline. And so as I look at these next meetings coming up, and they're particularly relevant, so we'll continue working through phase one at the next meeting. So is the thought that some of the questions that have come up today about phase one kind of thinking would be answered, or, you know, you know, further looked into, responded to in that meeting, along with other things that you think are relevant? Is it safe to assume that we're not going to get another option on closing? Or might some of the questions that have been asked today influence the shift in option proposals potentially?
Yeah, and we came into tonight definitely thinking that there would be things that came from this discussion, or you had additional things that you would want to see. And we need you to help us help drive that. We, we've given you some, but what else are some of your thoughts or ideas? I just want to, I want to be really clear that while we certainly are going to be overlapping in some of the programming, phase one takes us all the way through winter break into January, because phase one really is the short term, what are we going to, how are we going to put the statutory operating debt together? Yep.
So then some forecasting for the future, because of, you know, as you remember, I have talked about this whole notion of a new bill, but a whole other end on the elementary end, and the whole future end.
Yep.
So is, is, is it reasonable to think about some of that stuff?
Well, we can't not think about it. I'm with you. It's, it's hard not to, it's, it's, that's what gets really tricky in this, because I've heard three of you now talk about, we want to talk about the reimagine, we want to talk about what's next. We know hard decisions are being made now. People will understand those hard decisions more if they can see the next step, because the next step, there's a huge request that would have to come to the community. We are on November 3rd, if you recall, getting some survey results. That might help with saying, can we continue this conversation with Ernest? Or does that survey tell us that there's some things that are off the?
Well, thank you for that. Yeah, kind of the way that I, let's try to deliberately listen to you, is that this, you know, so you're looking a little bit down the road, but we're staying focused here, but. But the things we talk about, the things you decide, we decide here are things that will be, have these qualities, sustainability.
Yep.
Some other qualities and so, and visioning for the future.
Yep.
What can be, yeah, so.
I'm sorry, Director.
No, I just wanted to remind people about the survey. That's going to give us additional information about future.
Okay, Director Kilbrun and then Bowman and then me, and then mom.
Um, I wanted to just, first of all, say thank you because I know this isn't easy and I'm sure that there were many, many iterations. Um, and that's, that's why I almost feel bad saying like, can we do this without splitting a school? So I, I really want to say that I so much appreciate that you've actually done this with great efficiency. You're really, you're taking three buildings offline and you're really hardly disrupting, um, individual programs. And I, I know that doesn't mean much to the, in the end, whichever schools, um, if, if a school does get split, obviously to the individual people that are impacted, it will still be a big impact and it, I understand that completely, but I, I really do want to say I appreciate this really does limit either plan that you brought to us limits that and I, I just want to say thank you for that. Um, it, you know, one thing too, that's pretty clear, looking at these numbers, that right now, um, the east side of the district is just not where the kids are living, right? And that there's less need for schools, school buildings on the east side of the district. And so, um, that's just really impacting our need to, um, and, and so I, I, it's just interesting to see that and to see, you know, when we talk about what we need a school in the southeast corner, the question is, do we? Um, because maybe the, just the population isn't there to sustain it right now. And I'm not saying get rid of the building entirely, but I'm saying is that do, do we need all these schools on the east side, um, as much as we did when they were built, um, based on the populations? Cause you look at the numbers, um, that those schools have right now and they're just not huge because those are just older communities, right? So I'm just wondering, based on that data, if we really need to be focusing as much? Now, those may be the buildings that are in better condition too and I know it plays into that as well. And I haven't played with the whole matrix yet, but I'm just saying that I, that's a question I have is that do, do we really need to be as focused on that, that that's really not where the kids are? Going down there.
Okay, I want to take Dr. Bowman.
Yeah, I have a couple, a couple of concerns as far as we talk about, um, sort of that special sauce thing. Now, I really want to make sure that every single one of our schools has that special sauce, that we're not, we're not putting schools aside or, you know, making decisions based on, oh, we can take this programming and move it over here, but that still leaves other kids without. I'm really concerned because of our number of magnet schools versus non-magnet schools and because I've been from the east side, I'm concerned that we don't have population on the east side because this district moved to the west side 20 years ago. And, um, you know, I want to make sure that, that the east side of the district is not neglected. It is one of the things that traditionally in this school district, uh, people moved into the city of Crystal because it gave them access to the Robbinsdale School District, yet in a very easy way. If they bought a house here and they were affordable in Crystal, nothing's affordable now, but you know, they could buy a, a, a two-bedroom starter home over by Kaboom and then they were in the best district in this metropolitan area and it was a huge draw for us. But as things changed and what I've heard over, you know, the years was we didn't invest in the east side of the district, in my opinion. And, and I want to make sure that we invest equally across the district. I think that's really important. And I, and I also want to make sure that when we're talking about our schools that, that equal across, that one school is not getting more. I mean, if we have, if we have special education in one building, we should have special education in all of our buildings. And, and we can't make, I will refuse to support buildings that have exclusive things that are not available to our other schools because I think that that has been a huge disservice, uh, demographically for us in this school district. And, um, you know, um, I want parents and students to know that when they enter at the end of this whole process, when they enter into a building in this district, they are getting the best, hands down. Because I am tired of living in a world where if you have, that means someone else is not going to have. And that's my concern. I want to make sure that the haves are across the board and, and some building is getting less because I don't know why we do that in this world. But, um, I don't want to see someone else suffering because we need to put this over here. That's my concern.
I have another question related to Lakeview. So if Education Service Center moved to Sunny Hollow, would there be room at Sunny Hollow for, um, our, uh, I do, yeah, cause that's on bus line. It's more centrally located in the district. And then Lakeview would be offline.
So again, one of the things I would say without the data in front of me, which always makes them nervous, is again, one of those criteria is, um, the condition.
Yeah.
And you maybe have the data in front of you as you're saying, just don't say it style. Is that, that's true, yeah.
It's got a lot of needs.
Yep, so that's right, that's the balance of it all is, is.
Because Lakeview doesn't have a lot of needs. It's just not a great education for something so centralized or centralized.
And Lakeview doesn't have the land to expand if and when that would ever happen.
Okay, Director Long and then Director Bassett.
Um, I am wondering about, so RMS has a community gym in it. What would happen with that?
So there is, um, with the community gym and the investment that the city of Robbins gym made at that time, there is a buyout provision and we are nearing the end of that term of the community gym. So there would be, but we would have the opportunity to, uh, exercise that buyout provision. Uh, I am thinking, what was it, one eighty, one fifty, one forty, one fifty, one eighty?
One fifty or less.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty thousand or less to exercise that option so we truly could shutter the building. And that would be out of capital. It would not be out of, I mean, it's, it's a bucket thing, but a dedicated, um, resource that we could use.
Director Bassett?
So, um, I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about the demographic study we had from Hazel and I know it shifted somewhat from the years ago when she came. But one of the things that has stuck in my mind is she talked about where the growth in this district is in terms of, yes, we have a lot of settled, um, people who stay in their homes and I would say Robbinsdale, Crystal, Golden Valley, a lot of our communities do, um, toward this east side, south side, whatever. But the fact of the matter is, is that the growth is happening on that's in those areas and, you know, a little bit further north and east, that's where the growth is happening, demographic growth. Now, that's my impression. Uh, I'd have to look back at the study to see if it's telling us more about trends now, about where the growth is. People having babies, you know, I mean, and they're having them, you know, and, and immigration. There's a combination of drivers that is driving population and it's happening in those communities. So they're not stagnant. You know, the east, you know, so that, that, that's my impression. So if I need a refresher, go back and read it again and.
So one of the things specific to Hazel's study, um, and the information that was collected, when you talk about, it, it would be changed, there isn't necessarily new development. There isn't land that, you know, where new housing is, is, um, increasing. However, in the same package, um, the software that we're using for the heat maps, there is also a, a switch in there that we can use to, to maybe answer the question of where the ages of the kids and where the potential for that is. So we, we might have an option, Helen, to hit the, that specific question coming out of that.
And I believe that that's really important information because we have a lot of assumptions about where people are going, what's going on. Uh, and I think having that data will really help us. And somewhere in this, I'm hoping that we're going to, some of the families that have chosen to move out or that are now having babies now and their kids aren't in school, that they will choose Robbinsdale. And they will choose Robbinsdale because we've actually built something for them to come to. And so I think that, I mean, I see a lot of new families all over my neighborhood all the time, you know? Well, baby came by and visited me the other day, lifted my spirits, you know, and that's for sure. You know, along with the parents, baby couldn't walk, you know, he was in his stroller. But, uh, but, but the reality is that, you know, we want to build something that people will come to.
Yeah, I don't believe Hazel's study is specific to here, here's certain areas of growth. I certainly know it's that we don't have necessarily, we don't have land available for housing moves and that sort of thing. However, I do think we can get to something of what you're looking for.
Well, we will and we, and remember, the population is aging. People are, you know, they, they may not leave until they're actually passing it on to their child or selling the house, but movement's going to happen just because it's not, you know, if we don't have a lot of young families right now, doesn't mean they're not coming because the housing stock is solid.
Director Bowman and then Director Long.
Good. And, and I'm happy to report in my own, very own neighborhood, we've had ten houses go up for sale. It, it's my generation are finally moving on. I thought it would have happened earlier, but I cannot believe how hot my neighborhood, the for-sale stands are going up. I think part of that is because Crystal's going to do fifteen percent tax increase this year and next year.
Well, that's true.
So the folks from Crystal are like, we're going to bail. Um, so, um, you know, well, you know, the older ones, what can you say? They're like, we already paid our debt to this community, we're going. So, uh, the fact that, uh, I'm seeing a huge surge in houses for sale in, in the city of Crystal should actually give us some hope that, um, because they're houses, you know, which is where your demographics claim that new kids come from, so.
Depending the houses, but it's also depending on the dollar value of those houses and the affordability for, uh, parents that are at the age of.
Of little ones, yeah. And, and, and I agree and, you know, Crystal's always going to have more affordable housing than Golden Valley or, or, and even parts of Robbinsdale because just the makeup is different, but with the three-bedroom rambler, standard little houses that are not, uh, they're considered affordable, let's face it. That's a tough number to choke down, but just to say, those houses are going up for sale, so.
Director Long?
Okay, so I wanted to go back to, uh, it was brought up about special ed programming being in every building. And I know special ed programming is in every building, um, but what about center-based? What would that look like if we had center-based in all of our buildings? Because that's different and that takes up, you know, a classroom, uh, with fewer students and more staff in it. So just wondering about if there was center-based in all these buildings, what would that look like?
Well, center-based is going to change your capacity depending upon the building. Part of the, it's part of the kind of next step in this whole programming conversation of if there, if we get to a spot where we say that this building is not something we're interested in at all, it gets back to the question around, could all three of these buildings fit into this building? Well, maybe if we don't have center-based. We had center-based as an example, maybe two of them can. This is where all the puzzle pieces start fitting together and giving you what your true options are based on what the sandbox is. Right now, the options that we've presented there are making the assumption that we will have center-based programming in the buildings.
Director Bassett?
So, um, speaking of special education, um, you, I've, I've been reading some, I haven't read deeply, but reading, reading some information that talks about, uh, mainstreaming as a concept of children with special needs into the greater population, is it really benefiting those children? Um, so that's a thought. Uh, along with that thought, we now have in our center-based programs, um, there is an ability to increase the number of children, I know based on facility, but you know, so I'm wondering how that fits in the current federal landscape. What, what do we need to be thinking about? What do you, you and us need to be thinking about with regard to federal constraints? Maybe they're short-term, maybe they're longer-term, but there's some threats to funding for special education. And so what does that look like? How can we plan for that? And so that's just a kind of rhetorical question that goes to the programming that we're going to talk about in the future, relatively near future, but future. So, but it will be factored because we'll be talking about what kind of programming we're going to provide within what facilities at some point.
I think the more, until we know more, it's hard. Until we know more, the, any answer that I would give would be speculative at best.
Yeah. That's, I know it's under your radar, right?
I don't have a good.
No, 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 I mean, the issue itself and how that fits into what we're talking about, that's all I'm saying.
So we, I would, we've come, we've kind of come back and forth or circled back around to twenty-six, twenty-seven, what are we trying to do? We're trying to shrink the footprint of the district because we have more space than what we need. We, we then, and, and this is what happens in all of the conversations. It's not just this group here. It's when we're trying to come up with options. We end up going down potential rapids that we won't have access to. Um, and so we have to put pins in those, we'll get to them. They're, they are part of the, everything is a part of the conversation, right? Music program is part of the conversation, special ed is a part of the conversation, the magnet schools are part of the conversation, transportation is part of the conversation, distances that kids would be from the building they're currently at to the building that they would be moving to with the disruption to the district. Everything under the sun is a part of the potential conversation. And I think it brings us back to, I don't want the first slides that I shared of, this entire process is really messy, um, it's clunky, um, it's emotional. It, it, tonight is the start of the emotion for many people, right? It just, it is. Um, it's imperfect at best. And the reason that it's imperfect is because every decision we make will have a trade-off. And that means that everybody is going to be impacted directly or indirectly somehow with every decision because we have competing interests. It's that whole concept of the pond is now shrinking. So now it's, this competes with this and this competes with this. And we've already, right, we've already made the assumption that we're not doing anything for twenty-six, twenty-seven with magnet schools. That immediately complicates the whole potential solution, not because they're magnet schools, but because they're buildings, right? Um, and then you add on to that the conditions of our buildings and what do we, what buildings are we willing to continue to put money into and not put money into? And then you layer the locations of buildings. And now we're into the conversation we've been having tonight, which is exactly the conversation we need to be having, is, is how do we do this? How do we get through the clunkiness? How do we get through the imperfection and get to a spot that gets the district to the footprint size that we can manage as part of the SOB plan and sets us up for what three or four of you have touched on, which is, as you see some of, to the question of the assumptions, there's intentionality behind some of the, the pieces that are in there, right? You can forecast what could be if there are dollars to support something. It would, all of that has to be part of the decision because it's got to be feasible, it's got to be desirable and has to be sustainable.
Can I add to that? So I've been in the district for 29 years. We have opened buildings, we have closed buildings and I have been through many of those pieces. And I think the intentionality that we have put into this process and grounding the work in the strategic plan and having the reimagine group guide the community developed creation of the reimagine work has brought us here to the intentionality of your questions tonight. It is going to be hard, back to what Director Long said, with staff and families and the impact that they are going to have, it is going to be hard. But the end game, that end product of what we want Robbinsdale to be is going to be amazing. And we have to keep that in sight as we know that these challenging. as we know that these challenging things that we are gonna need to face and the decisions that we're gonna need to make are gonna be incredibly impactful and hard for some people. And yet we need to remember our NDA. And I think what we are doing here in this process is unbelievable compared to some of the other building closures that Robinson has gone through in the past.
Thank you.
I can be a tick.
Superintendent Allen?
Um, so I know there were some questions, um, about demographics and enrollment. So I'm, I'm gonna suggest board members, if you haven't seen it, to go to the October 3rd presentation from the state demogra, or, or the, or the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD. I, I just think it's a, um, yeah, it's in the link. Um, but I, I just think it's important that we recognize where the state is in terms of school-aged children. And, and we have places that we can certainly retain and grow our capture rates and, you know, making sure that we sustain, stabilize our enrollment, right? We have a really excellent product, it's gonna be someplace people want to come. But I also just wanna be really, I wanna be sure that you, as you take a look at this, you see, I mean, we're finally, Minnesota as a state is back almost to the population change and the growth since the early 2000s, right before COVID, right, 0.7%.
2000, Director?
Twenty, twenty, yeah, yeah, right before, sorry about that, right before COVID, where 0.7%. I also want you to note in this presentation, birth of a decline statewide, school-aged children, birth of a decline statewide. So there's smaller cohorts of school-aged children across the way. Um, specifically, we're called out in the average annual change in population ages 5 to 17. By county, the largest annual losses are in Hennepin County. Furthermore, this isn't great news, but it is news and it's important for us to pay attention to. As we look at the school districts with the largest numeric gains in resident population and then the largest losses, declines in resident population, Robbinsdale is third numerically with the largest numeric declines in resident population ages 5 to 17, changes from 2020 to 2023. So I just think it's really important, right? Hope's not a strategy. I, I believe our strategy of building an excellent school district helps us bring that capture rate, which is at about 62%, up. It helps us retain resident population. It helps us ensure that perhaps surrounding districts see something in us. Um, so there's places to reverse, but I think it's an important study just to take a look at again to kind of see what the state of the state is in school-aged population. So I will send that one to you.
Thank you.
Director Bowman? Well, I was just gonna add to that, that, because in no way am I disparaging the east side of our district, but people with young children buy homes, they're out because it's cheaper. You get more house per square foot, Hazel Reimhardt has said that in the NASA presentation, they also said that too. And so even when you look at our cities within our school district, the percent of kids 0 to 18 gets bigger the, the further out west and north you go. So Plymouth, Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park have the highest percentage of kids compared to the other cities. So it's just, it's just kind of the natural progression of things that the democraters are seeing.
Yeah.
So no, we bought our first house in Crystal too, so love Crystal.
Still sounds disparaging, so. I've been here over 30 minutes listening to it go away from the east side of the district. So sometimes investments get to be made because it's the right thing to do on the east side of the district. Also, it's why St. Michael has such a big road bus school district because they keep going west.
So, what happened? Director Long?
Yeah, so, because you had talked about capture rate. So I'd really love to see there are Robbinsdale school buses that drop off in my neighborhood and there are non-Robinsdale school buses that drop off at my new, in my neighborhood. And loads of kids coming off of them, so I'd like to see the non-Robinsdale buses disappear from my neighborhood.
Me too.
Yeah.
And right, right, how do we do that? Build an excellent school district.
And they will come.
There are a lot of kids getting off those, uh, Robbinsdale buses.
Well, you saw, you saw the numbers, like, like we have that, we have the numbers of students who open it all out.
Hey, so what happens next? Homework for us between now and the next meeting, or what, what happens next?
Both ends. So homework continues to be, as questions come up, getting those to superintendent as you're processing through stuff. Intentionally processing through stuff is the homework. Uh, in the meantime, as we look forward to November 3rd, uh, we will have Peter Landerman here to present the survey results. So we have that piece of information. And then we will also most likely have some other statutory operating debt items to potentially put out there. Like we, we kind of floated it tonight, programming things, these of that nature. Because we, we have to start ramping that up too. Um, and then I would say that we will go back, kind of take the questions that we've written down with regard to the two options here, uh, look at a couple of different things and see if there's something else that seems to make sense as a tweak on an option or this or that, um, and bring that back as the third part of the discussion for November 3rd. That hopefully will set the stage for one more round of this so that by the 17th, we're ready to come to you with what would be the, our final, here's what we're thinking we should do. What last questions do you have to get us to the 24th?
What members? Questions?
You can read.
Pardon?
They can be, oh, they continue to be questions, for sure.
Send it to superintendent.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good work. All right. This, see, this will belong to board governors. So, is it June, everybody got this? Let's see, we have, okay, so let's take a five-minute bio break. We'll just take five minutes. Can we focus?
But, I'm getting a water and breaking a picture. Yes, we're having a bio break. Tell him.
I'm just...
It is.
I'm not interested.
It's just like, alright.
Me and you are...
I just want to...
So all three of you are going to outline what we have on the school board, right? Do you love governance, right?
You can always actually read his digest first.
You can read it online anytime.
Yeah, that's right. I'm gonna go watch it with a glass of wine. I'm like, maybe we should try that. Goodnight, goodnight.
Goodnight, goodnight.
Thank you. Boy, declare a program. Okay, and we're back. Okay, so this school board's governance and procedure, uh, governance, procedure, and handbook has been making for all in here. Uh, even before that, when we were in professional development with Deborah Keyes, she was like, "What? You don't have one of these? You need to have one." And so Director Bassett and I worked every, every week for our...
Director Bassett.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bassett. No.
Don't give away my credit.
Well, it's Theresa. No, sorry, Director Bassett. Director Bowman and I worked, uh, hours every week.
And now...
And then in between times, they even worked more than I did.
Right.
On this. And so what we did is we took the MSBA school board manual, handbook, and we took our bylaws and our policies and our, everything else that we had related and tucked it where it belonged. So this is like one-stop shopping now for the school board. So, and it, when it's online and it says a statute, you can click it and you can get to the statute. Or if it says a policy, you can click it and you can get to a policy. But it's taken, but we didn't think it of ourselves. We used the MSBA. Do you want to add anything, Director Bowman?
Yeah, because the, you know, just for the record, the MSBA, MSBA, this was their first, uh, attempt at putting together a manual because of the demand they were getting from school, just the questions they were getting. So I took the class in this when it was first put out last, last year, whenever it was.
January?
August. Yeah, in August. Um, and was it '23? I think it was '23. Yeah. So in August of '23, I took the class and we started, uh, you know, that's where it came from. Most of the stuff, if you, if you've read through it, really is stuff from MSBA and not a lot...
Personalized for us.
Personalized for us, and it can always be personalized for us. And my point to that is the policy committee hasn't yet discussed its procedure for a non-committee member to bring forth a request for substantive changes in policy. And so I, so the policy committee will read that, uh, here at the end of the month. And then that's another option, that that would be a procedure that we could implant in here where they talk about the, the policy committees. It's always, it can always be growing.
So we could call it a living document, as a budget is a living document.
Right.
And so when things change, this will change. But this is a really solid starting point.
And MSBA maintains the links, which is correct, the way we have it linked. I think that was, we don't maintain the links, but because we have it online and we decided to keep it online, it's because MSBA maintains those links.
Oh, the links to the MSBA stuff?
Right.
But like where it says board committees and then underlined, like Molly has put all of the links in, and that's at our area, on our...
Which is why it's gonna stay online.
So, do you have any question? Yes, Director Bowman? Oh, sorry.
So changes that may happen based on stat to you from MSBA's side will update automatically without...
Right, that their links would update. The MSBA links...
Yes, on their website.
Yes, okay.
And then the ones that we change.
Molly will be responsible.
Fearless.
Or the executive assistant.
Fearless executive assistant will take care of it. Because this was a lot of work, I mean, it was a lot of work for Director Bowman and you, but it was a lot, a lot, a lot of work for Molly to get it and then have to do all the, uh, table of contents even.
Which we haven't done yet.
The point was right there.
Well, the table of contents, uh, will be the last thing we decided to do. I think it's pretty close, but we haven't finished because that was the least of our concerns.
Okay. Director Ma?
Okay, so on page 16, the S in study is red. I don't know why it's red, but...
I mean, it has something in red?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Because there's an error. I think it says, because it shouldn't be study shops.
Oh.
So, study, I don't know if it's...
Sessions?
Yeah. And I don't know if that's...
No, it's workshops. Workshops.
It says, yeah, it says study shops.
It's workshops.
Retreats.
So is that just to, so...
We'll have to figure it out.
That is... Yeah, we'll just change that to workshops. Okay, so can I keep going here?
Yes.
Okay. Fifteen, the board compensation, is that really accurate? Because I don't think, I don't remember it being that much.
The, uh, paragraph, did it...
It's at the end, it's the last fifteen, the initial sixteen.
That is actually correct.
Really?
Unless you have money taken out for taxes.
I thought it was only seven thousand for directors.
Seven thousand. No, I think it's seven thousand eight hundred.
Yeah.
You do math.
Okay. Because yeah, when I was just a director, I was not getting that amount of money a month. But I had to throw anything to take up.
When you, when you first started, HR people didn't have you fill out that thing? I did.
Yeah, I filled out a thing, but I didn't, yeah. It wasn't, I wasn't getting that amount of money per month.
Okay. Six fifty, and twelve is seven eighty. I mean, seven thousand eight hundred, but it ends up more like five hundred seventy-five with after taxes. That sort of sound like what you were getting?
Mine was six hundred after taxes.
Yeah. And then as vice chair, that's, but I guess you're saying after taxes, because that's definitely not what I'm getting as vice chair. I'm pretty much getting the same as what I was given.
That's true, because it's only fifty dollars more a month. And so taxes, it's gonna be only like thirty-five dollars more a month than what you were getting.
Okay, I just, I thought it was seven hundred. Sure that's, I was like, when did we get a pay increase?
This has been the same since Patsy Green was on the board. Because one of the things, when she left the board, was make sure that there were increases put through, and that was the last time I think increases were put through. So these are correct amounts.
Okay, and then, sorry, my other thing was, I was just, um, wondering about the charts on page five.
By the way, thanks for looking at the set of time. For sure.
Yeah, I tried out some of the links too, but there's just way too many links to try them all out.
Okay, chart on page five.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, page five and on page six. Because there's some duplication there, and I get it, that's true, but would that be accurate and worth thinking about this?
No.
Because I get that the assistant superintendent would also be in the cabinet, but would they be in the office? Right, I think there's some changes there.
I think that's just a bit weird.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just cross him out. He doesn't, he only gets to be in that for once.
And I think Kristen too, probably should move into leadership cabinet.
Oh, there you go.
Is that your...
Yeah, yeah. So you want Kristen to be put into this next box?
Yeah, I think, I think Bob and Kristen into the leadership, the executive cabinet.
Bob is in the leadership cabinet.
But he's also in the office superintendent.
Okay. Put Kristen back in there and then...
And the last thing, I take offense to the picture on page nine. I would rather go to glamour shots, so that we have shots down there.
Well, how about if I need to have way, and we take a new one?
Well, we have the new person.
Um, we can have a new one before the new person is on, and then when the new person is on, or just let it go until the new person wins?
Or we could just have shots when we have our ESC picture day.
Okay. And then, and then just the individual board members?
Yeah, as soon as I find out when that's gonna be, I'll let you know.
And then we can just have individual board members, and then we can pull them out and put them in as...
Perfect.
I think that makes more sense, thank you. Just, I mean, if you have a glamour shot, instead of your school muck shot...
Yeah, bring it forward.
Just bring it, as long as you're fully clothed and everything.
Can I, can I request though, a feather boa in the picture? Are you sitting there? Okay. I do have a question, for real though.
Yes.
Sorry.
Well, that was weird, but...
My, my big question on this is because this kind of information can get outdated, I need to be updated very quick, very frequently. So my question is just, where does that fall? Who's responsible for that? How often will this be reviewed and updated, just to make sure that it, it does, because a lot of work went into this, I don't want it to fall, um, outdated.
You want to get first?
Yeah, I, I really think this could easily be rolled into the policy committee. It makes sense in the policy committee.
Is it gonna be an annual review? I just want to make sure that it...
Annually or biannually?
Well, you know, first of all, it'd be like, sort of on-demand, when we see things that need to be changed. If, we can use the same process that you would use to ask for substantive changes in policies themselves, but I think, I think it, it, you know, that's a tough one, because I, I batted that around back and forth. You know, I would say every two years, you could get by with a review on this. Because I don't see the MSBA stuff changing all that much. I mean, most of what goes on in governance is meant to never change. So I would think a review every two years would be sufficient with additions as they come through.
I think maybe there should be an annual just review to make sure board phone numbers, email addresses...
That way.
And links are correct.
Sure, for the technical stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's the kind of stuff that can go out of date really quick. It's sort of like webpages, we always forget to review our websites, and then someone will email you and be like, "This is a broken link." Oh yeah, better check out.
So annually...
At least for the, like, just...
For the technical...
Now, you're okay with that, that's your...
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Well, can I add to that, maybe to, not just annually, but if there's like some major changes to some key, key people?
Yeah, that's what was, yeah.
Oh, sure, like turnover in administration or turnover among board members?
I think that, that was my, why my initial question about, are things going to happen naturally?
Well, you know, directed towards Molly, because she owns the document, so... I see us wanting to keep it up to date.
Director Bassett, you have any thoughts?
Yeah. And first, thank you for all this work. It looks great, you know, and so, I really appreciate it, I do. And so a couple things, one, on page four, I'm gonna kind of maybe, uh, advance notice. So, oh, this has to do with the agenda. I, I do think that, and let's just, let's see, I'll pick one to say, focus on. It's item I, I, I. To prevent violations of the open meeting law, members we attend by, I, I suggest we add some language. Advance notice, comma, request, comma, or invitation, uh, by, to, attend by the chair. Because I think any of those things will avoid, um, open meeting law violations. And I think it's better to have it be more flexible than less flexible. I would, I would ask the question, over the last year, how many times have people come here to a genocide? I mean, that's not appropriate.
A lot.
Oh, I don't know about that, I'm just saying, I mean, it...
Can I ask a question, clarifying, because I'm taking on speaker, so it'd be attendance by invitation of the chair or at the request of...
Advance notice?
Attendance?
Well, you asked me what I said.
I'm, I'm seeing if I wrote this.
Okay, I was just gonna say advance notice was the first thing I said.
Well, may attend by invitation of the chair or at the request of a board director. And, and then the advance notice would be, uh...
By request, is kind of what I mean, so.
So you want advance notice to be included?
Well, you want to come, if you want to come.
Right, I'm just trying to get...
I'm just responding to what I think you're saying.
I'm trying to get, capture what you're saying.
Okay.
So you would, we would add advance notice because somebody couldn't just show up that day and say, "I want to be here," correct?
Exactly.
So it'd be advance notice, uh, invitation of the chair or request of a board director.
Yeah.
Okay, that's easy to add, and we can do that.
It's just flexibility, but always...
Okay, so if a person is interested in attending, they say, "I would like to attend the next one, can you let me know what it is when you, you know?"
I, I'm not gonna dictate that, I'm just saying, I think that the...
What we process.
I, I know, I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying, I think that the language, by request or by invitation, and what you always, I know what I do, I know what other people do, unless they're an email, you know, and ask, it's, it's in advance, and so I think that's common courtesy, really, you know, but... Yeah, and so, yeah, so the other thing I have is on page fourteen, um, I think that, this whole section on number ten about the will of the board, that is slippery slope language, and I know that, uh, when I say that, because I think it, it, I, I guess I feel like somewhere, we should say, the board should strive for consensus. Because I think consensus is what builds rapport. And, and consensus requires dialogue sometimes, but I think if the goal is consensus, and one of the things that, you know, resonated with me, uh, is that we heard in our recent training with MSBA is that consensus should be the goal. And that, uh, because I think Robert's Rules of Order is a framework that all school board choose, but, uh, but to use that as just the first go-to, the only go-to, if you, if the goal is not to build consensus, you lose a lot. Uh, and so I think that striving for consensus, however that can be fit into this sentence, is good. Uh, the board should strive for consensus to determine the will of the board. Uh, then of course, at the end of the day, you're gonna, if, if it's something that requires a vote, you're gonna take one. That doesn't go away. But I think adding consensus here and striving for it is of value.
As a, this, this section is the duties of the chair, so you're...
And that phrase, I think, should be right in there, I think, because it says that the chair communications of the board, the will of the board is defined, because, you know, it's already in here, that's the reason I responded to it, because it's written in here. Uh, defined as a simply, simple governing majority, where a majority of the board rooms are present. The will is always a majority voice. Well, that's obvious. I do think that embedding this in chair communications with striving for consensus is something I think is important for our chair to do. And so not immediately just go, you know, I think that we hear from people, in order to reach consensus, that is the goal. I, I think, you know, when I'm discussing with people, I listen to what they're saying. And if they, you know, I get, I've been influenced for years and years and years by what other people have said, and I'm gonna change my opinion. But, uh, if we rush right to, well, this will of the board, you know, and this thumbs-up thing, where we're also warning against that, is informal, well, the will of the board is, everybody said, the board people said, "Yes," so we're just gonna do it. And I'm not saying that that is, that's, you know, it, it's not a dig, it's just, it's not good practice. Because good best practice is, and it says it in this document, because it's, it's actually, what's expected is, when we take a vote, that's when it's real action. It's a slippery slope to go down the road of this will of the board stuff. This came from Robert's Rules.
Yeah.
This is Robert's Rules. I'm just, I'm just adding, do you agree with me?
And can I also add, the reason why it's in here was to give people a clear definition of what will of the board means. And that was to say that the will of the board is the majority voice.
Is there a better place to put consensus building?
Yes.
Yes.
Number eight.
Is where, the number eight, or earlier, maybe you want a paragraph in a different section, because it's not just the, it's not just the board chair.
Okay.
It is responsibility of every single person.
I, I agree totally.
All right, so I'm gonna make note of the paragraph here, consensus.
Yes.
Okay?
Superintendent Ma? I just want to make a comment, um, because I don't, I don't recall it the board table when it's an action item, the board taking a vote by a thumbs up, but I do, I do believe that study sessions, there's been times when I have asked for clear direction for the board, and so that's not a formal vote, but I need to know coming out of the study session that we're moving in the right direction. So I, I, I would hope we could continue to do that.
So I think we never would do thumbs up or two.
Yeah, so to, in response to superintendent, uh, I, I understand and I hear what you're saying. So I think that for the administration to kind of get a temperature about which way we're going here, that makes perfect sense. But I'm really talking about, this is the board's, you know, I mean, I'm really kind of thinking about this from the board's perspective, and trying to integrate things, and say, talk about things that I think will be helpful. The great word, we will put that in, we will find a place, agreement, we'll meet in time. Cool. And then the next one I, um, is on page twenty-four, and... Do not vote, so I think this is kind of sometimes in this nowhere, because do not send reply message to all emails that the board member needs to communicate the full board information, needs to go through the chair, the school board chair. Okay, then these communications, which can be in person, phone calls, emails, overform, considering a violation of open meeting, may allow governing body to collect, deliver, and take action on hook taxes. I think, not in this document, and in other documents I, I actually have seen, it's okay for workers to send, you know, if you want to send an email about the social thing, if you want to see if people are going someplace, if you're, if you're at a conference and you want to check in with people, it's okay to send emails to, if you're asking for direction or sharing information. If you're sharing information, ask okay. If, the key is one-way communication. Nobody should be back and forth whether you want it. If it's just sharing information, push it out there, that's it. If it goes to, you know, and BCC is an effective means. So I think that that gets confused, and I've heard people say, "You can't send this, you can't send that." I don't mean to be, you know, snarky about it, but I do think that that causes unnecessary, you know, I mean, it stands in the way of informality. I mean, because I don't, I haven't seen a big, in the last, you're anyway, a lot of emails that just come randomly from people about random things. That's, we seem to have grown out of that. But information sharing from one director to another, I think is perfectly fine. And so, and so information shared, if it's not trying to get a vote, if it's not trying to do something, it's just shared information, I think that's fine.
I would like to caution on that, that we have been cautioned by our attorneys repeatedly for board members not to send BCC items to the entire board. I'm understanding information, but if any part of that information suggests an action by the board or an action at the table, that is a violation of the open meeting law. I mean, saying that this is going to be at four o'clock, so everybody knows is one thing. Saying we should remove this from the agenda, or we should do this, or we should postpone action on that, that is, that is inappropriate and breaking the open meeting law. No, we can't do that.
I think we disagree, but, you know, I mean, if...
Well, I'm according to attorney, but I was having a turn talking.
Okay, no, I know, I thought you had paused.
I didn't.
Okay.
So according to our attorney, we have to be very, very careful about what is sent to the entire board air.
Sure.
And what would only be like an extreme circumstance or need for particular information, nothing about any proposed action or suggestions for action.
I think we agree. I think what we, what we're talking about in regard to what is information may be the crux of it, because I, I don't know that I've seen a lot of traffic that's come by, but there are, there's information, I think it can, should be, can be shared. But I mean, I, I've just, I've noted it, I've said it, you have your response, I will...
Yeah, so I'm kind of wondering about that too, and I don't know, I mean, it's probably not a part of this conver... It's probably not a part of this conversation, but I feel like there, there are times when... It's probably not a part of this conversation, but I feel like there are times when, how can we share information with each other that needs to go out to everybody? Because I know there has been stuff that has come to the chair that has not gotten out to all of us.
Has it been requested to go out to everybody, or has it just gone to the chair and the chair didn't send it? That's critical in the...
Right, well, and maybe it was implied, because there have been outside people who have sent stuff, you know, and then it didn't go out to everybody. So, you know, I'm just wondering, I mean, maybe that could be a conversation that we further have about how should that be dealt with? If information comes to one of us board members, how do we get that information out to everybody else? What's the best way to do that, you know? And then, sorry, if I could just add one more thought to that. I'm also wondering too, like, when we have listening session, like, we never talk about that or how we want to respond to that, or how we're feeling about the information that we heard from community members, you know? Like, when is the time for us to talk about that? And I know that was something that I asked when I first came on the board, but I'm still stuck wondering, you know, like, one response goes out from the chair, but that's not always necessarily how we all feel about it. How can we all sit and, I don't know, I'm going down a different place, but maybe at some point in time, we could put that in a parking lot or something and have that discussion.
Let's find the parking lot. Director Bass, did you want to finish?
Well, I, well, thank you, because I was quite done, but I appreciate your comments. On page 18. Page 28. Okay, communications with the media. So, district protocol. Situation or approach by media regardless of concern or board decision. Well, that happens all the time, they may ask it, but for the most part, people don't respond. The chair superintendent speaks with the media on behalf of the board. The chair superintendents are not available, there's no response to the media. The chair will find the board when there has been a request from the media. You know, oftentimes the media contacts individual board members without going to the chair, you know, they do that all the time. I don't necessarily have a problem with going for some of the formal things, but I do think that there may be occasions where if somebody asks me a question about something, for the most part, I don't answer it. But there may come a time that I want to, because the last thing that I'm very sensitive of these days is I am tired of being this vote, I'm tired of being included in stuff that I have nothing to do with, I've had it. And if I feel like it's a time for me to defend myself or say something, I'm going to do it. You know, so I'm just saying that on the record, because I've been the subject of a lot of some stuff that was not okay. And so, and so we don't, as citizens, give up that right. That does not mean I will have not been and will not continue to observe the district protocol, I don't problem with that. But there may be situations and circumstances where a director may feel like they need to respond on some issue. It may or may not have anything to do with you. But everything you do in the public reflects on this board.
Me or us?
Us. As long as you're board member, people can just say stuff, make up stuff, you know? So that is just a concern that I want to raise in this meeting, because I think it's important, because a lot of that stuff is dying now, but it has occurred.
And just a gentle reminder to everyone, just because a TV station calls or the newspaper calls does not mean you need to give a response. And so if your approach protocol is to refer to the superintendent or the chair.
And I don't say if anybody does contact me, I usually send a note to Terry or somebody. I usually tell, you know, if somebody reaches out to me, I mean, I'm not shy about that. But maybe that I'm gonna have to be an auditor about what I think I need to do at the end of the day, notwithstanding this. Or this.
Another one?
No, those were one of the ones I had, really, like I said in the beginning, I thought you did a great job, and thank you for going.
Oh, I just have one more. There were a couple of parts where it said red draft or red include this chart and that chart, and that's gonna be included in.
Yeah, and now that you tell us that, it lets me know that I think what I'll do is make an appointment with Molly, and her and I will just sit down with kind of that fine control and go through each one and make sure it's not there. And can I respond to the listening time stuff? And this might be a good time for clarity. As I've understood it, I will, like, we get emails in from people, right? And the board chair is our designated responder to it. It doesn't prevent me from responding to those emails or responding to the people who have talked to us during listening time. But when I respond to them, I always start with, the chair has the official response from this board, because generally speaking, but this is only my opinion, I don't speak for the board, I start my communications with that, because I'm usually seeking more information. And I don't think that that is a violation. That's how I was raised throughout all of it. It isn't that we don't have the right to talk to those people, because that's sort of what the other side of it implies. It means that this is, the chair is our official spokesperson, but, and maybe I'm wrong, but I've always done it with, in a way that I'll reach out and communicate and talk with people via email and whatever, because that's also my job. It's just not my job to be the official spokesperson for the board.
When I was not the chair, I would respond to the emails that I got by saying, "Thank you for sending me the email," about whatever it was.
Right.
And if they were a teacher or something, "Thanks for teaching the district. I want you to know that I read your email." And that's, and so often they would respond, "Thank you so much for letting me know you read my email." That's, they wanted, they wanted to be heard. And they didn't, they didn't need a whole opinions from me or anything like that, but I wasn't gonna give, because I wasn't the spokesperson for the board. But I always let them know, "I read your email, I read the, I read the entire thing, thank you for sharing your thoughts."
Right, and that, but again, and I like to ask questions, what, you know, or I'll ask questions, or I'll, that kind of thing, because it's all in learning, learning, so.
Director Bass?
Well, and actually, that's the spirit that I said in my comments a few minutes ago. I think Director Bowman said, "Oh, I will." The fact of the matter is, is that anytime I'm responding for myself, I'm responding just me saying this, I'm not speaking for the board. And that's part of being honest with the board. There's, you can go out in the community, people are gonna see you, they're gonna talk to you, and so there's no difference between people talking to me there and me, as long as I know that we have an official response and what I'm saying is not it. That's what's important.
I, you know. I think that, that's, it's interesting just listening to y'all, because I think what, what I would want to be sure is that clarity, because it'd also be hard for a community member to get seven responses saying seven different things.
Right.
You know, so I think, I think that's, that's an important distinction, that would be a question.
And, you know, and so, the longer, I mean, over the years, the thing is, is that that is really the practice that I've ever been, people, board members respond to community people all the time, within those parameters that we just talked about, because they have relationships. You know, that's why people support the district, and if you're not responsive, they don't like it, you know? And we don't want to be like that. But I think as long as you're clear about, you're not speaking for the board, and they know you are. And I think that's been standard practice as long as I can remember, that people do that.
Does that make the board seem like it's divided sometimes?
I don't know about that. I mean, because, here's my barometer. If it hasn't caused a problem, and it's not causing problems, I think we focus on what the culture and what we're doing. And this manual gives a perfect opportunity to do that. But it also gives an opportunity for us to hear each other. Because I agree with what Director Bowman said, because that's what's been in practice. That's what directors have been doing. They've been saying, "I'm not the chair, I'm not the spokesperson," and we also both do the protocol. Have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to, and I've sent emails to, I just sent them, "I'm not a Dallas superintendent," and I just sent them to Terry. You know, I mean, so I think people use consensus and do those things, and I think that that's fine. If it's something for implementation, that's gotta be something that's in the administration failing with. I am very quick to say, "That's not my job, and I don't have the answers for that. You need to talk to the superintendent," because I can't tell you, I wasn't there, I don't know what happened, and I'm not gonna get in the middle of anything that I don't know about. You know, and that was the way I've rolled when I was chair, you know, so.
All of my replies go to the whole board and the superintendent. But then with you guys' reply, it's just from you and nobody knows until it comes back in my face that, even by what one of you sent.
Even that, it'd be easy to put your, I mean, it would be, there are times I put your name as a CC at home. Western world, bro.
So what?
Yeah, so I think, at least since I have been on the board, the practice that I've looked at is if it's an email sent to the whole board, I read it and I'm silent about it and wait for your response. Emails that are addressed to me directly concerning whatever the topic may be, if it's something that I feel like it needs to be shared, I will forward it on. If it's just about things that we've been already hearing about, like you said, I will acknowledge that I've received it and let them know, you know, the process is still going on and just kind of time them and... So I don't know if we should start maybe CC you on those individual or...
Or adopting what you're saying, if it comes to the full board, we're silent and we're at the chair answers. I mean...
That makes sense. I'm pretty sure I got this language, I think that Liz gave us language not too long after I started. So I just have an automatic response that says, "Thank you for your email. I read each email and take your input seriously, although I cannot respond in details in individual school board director. Please know I appreciate you reaching out. You should hear directly from the school board chair and/or district administration as appropriate." And that automatically gets sent to each...
From you?
Yeah, each email. So everybody, automatic, and I'll have people work right back, "Thank you for responding." So, but it's clearly an automatic thing. But in that way, they do get a response, they know that it's been received, and then, then you can respond in your time. And then, but I, that language came, I adopted that from, I believe Liz Vera had created, you know, I amended it to make it my personal language, but basically what she said, so that they don't think it just went to a black hole. But also I'm not responding in a way that's not appropriate, so.
And occasionally, the emails slip through the cracks with me, or takes a while.
Or a chair, because we shouldn't be just saying about you.
I know with me.
It's the chair, it's the role of the chair.
Director Long?
Yeah, so I'm just gonna go back to, I just want to know when we get an opportunity to communicate about some of that stuff that we get from the community, from listening time, emails and whatnot. I still feel like there's, you know, a time where we should be able to have a chance to talk about it, otherwise it feels weird that, you know, we're supposed to be the school board, but we're not talking about whatever that issue and problem is. And I know there are some limitations because of data privacy or employment law, but still I feel like there should still be a time when we as a board can address what's been brought to us. Or at least discuss it amongst each other, even though I, that's all I'm asking for, and when is the time that we can do that?
Director Muttall?
Yeah, and I think I agree with that also, because I think maybe two or three months ago, I actually mentioned that, right? But we, I don't think we have the environment to be able to bring some of those things to the floor without attacking other personalities, right? I think based on my observation at least, I feel like we are heading in the right direction. Maybe hopefully after January or so, I can see us functioning the way school boards are supposed to function. So that's, that's a great conversation to have, I think.
So what I'm wondering, Caroline, is I saw a section in the manual that talked about communication among directors, I believe. And so maybe there's some basic information, look at that, see if there's a place where that, you know, kind of an informal discussion or something that, I don't know. Or you guys can talk about in a GSA setting, work session time for just general discussions? I'm not sure. I'm just responding with your...
Let's talk about at GSA settings, about having an opportunity for the board members to talk among themselves about what we've heard at listening time, or if we're being inundated with emails, like sometimes we have been. If there is like a time in work sessions or something for the board to talk, does maybe what we're hearing at listening is wrong information, and we need to be able to, and maybe we just need to go toll any...
There might be something in between.
Yeah.
Which is, some of the stuff that comes through doesn't belong to us, belongs to Terry. And maybe if it's an update that goes on the Friday report, that might be a good place for specific things from listening time to be included, that if it's not board stuff, or at least the response from the administration.
But I'm hearing you say you want a chance for the board to actually talk about. Let's talk about that.
A January change. We might be so...
A half second, half second.
Does anybody else have anything else on the...
All right, well, I'll make sure that we do the changes.
The annual, I mean, I thought that was a good question that Eva asked about.
We'll do it anyway.
And the annual, and the lead by the policy committee.
And again, I mean, that functional or technical versus substantive.
Okay, and so that means that our next business meeting, this will come to be approved by board.
Correct.
Okay, so if you're pondering things and something comes to you, don't wait till that meeting.
Send it to me. Send it to me, to me or to the board.
We're gonna revise, whatever adjustments you make in descriptions or whatever.
Just, there weren't a lot that I heard. Well, what we'll do is we'll put a, I'll put a cover page together that says page whatever we did this, page whatever we did this, page whatever we did that, to track those changes. So, like, good.
Sadly, it looks like...
Same magic words.
We don't seem to have any more discussion.
Oh, but not sadly, we went 17 minutes over on this topic.
But we're still on.
Oh, well.
My sign is a nine thirty, thank you everybody, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, y'all. Good work. There's lots to think about.